Okay, good evening. My name is Jim McCaffrey. I'm calling the meeting to order. This is the March 29th, 2021 meeting of Millis Select Board. With me this evening, including with me on the board is Mr. Pete Germaine and Ms. Erin Underhill, the other board members. Also, we have Mr. Kozinski, Mike Kozinski, our town administrator. And Maureen Kenese is going to be our producer tonight, producer and director of this program. Thank you, Maureen. So with that said, we'll start off the meeting. We do have an announcement that we'd like to make this evening. Let me just see. At this point, okay, I'll make this announcement. This is an announcement I'd like to make with a great deal of gratitude. During the meeting tonight, we are going to be able to announce that Mr. Scott McPhee of Harrison McPhee, Inc., which is a landscaping company and tree service company, he is offering to donate his time and equipment to prune all the trees in front of the municipal building, the Millis Veterans Memorial Building, next Friday. So the firm did prune the trees eight to 10 years ago, and now they've offered to do it again, which is a great service to the community, a cost savings to the town, and we really appreciate it. So just to ratify this, I guess I'd just like to make a motion that the board of the Select Board gratefully approve the offer of Mr. Scott McPhee to do the tree pruning in front of the Veterans Memorial Building.
I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments from the board?
Aside from echoing your thanks, none here.
Likewise, thank you very much.
Again, thank you very much to Mr. McPhee and his firm. It's very much appreciated. So I will then poll the board for that motion. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
The motion is gratefully carried. Thank you. Next item we have on our agenda is our regular update on the COVID scenario, COVID situation here in town. We have Mr. McPhee. Pardon me?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if Mr. McPhee is on the line. He was muted earlier. I don't know if he has anything to add.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't realize I was muted. I've just, yeah, thank you for doing that. Yeah, just two, two seconds. I just wanted to say that, you know, we'd like to adopt that tree in perpetuity and just to show our appreciation of the town and we're actually, it'll be part of our donation to the Millis Beautification Day and our annual Arbor Day donation. So thanks for the opportunity. It should be really fun and it's nice to be able to do that for the, for the people of Millis. So thanks.
Thank you very much. Would have been easier when we were not on Zoom to make sure everybody's on time, but we really thank you very much and look forward to working with you in the future and your, and your, and your firm, as well as the other things you're doing for the town. So thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay. So Mr. McPhee, you're next.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Jim McCaffrey. As a, a quick update on COVID, vaccination campaign is still undergoing, as we know. The stats in Massachusetts currently from our organization system database show 3,400,000 people have been vaccinated, 1,250,000 have been fully vaccinated. You know, things are going along quite, quite well. I guess the hopes is are that within the next few months, we can get the majority of the state vaccinated fully. And with the Johnson, the Johnson vaccine, hopefully that, that opens up new windows of opportunity. In town, we ended up vaccinating with the help of the fire department and the staff at the Millis Housing Authority, residents at the Millis Housing Authority. And we're also planning on doing some vaccinations there as well, the same site, this Wednesday. The first vaccinations were 24. That will be a two-dose vaccine with Madonna being used. The other plan is homebound vaccinations, which hopefully will occur sometime early to April, the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. We're still waiting on the state in the allocation, the local boards of health in regards to that endeavor, and we look forward to that as well, again, with the help of the fire department. So that's, you know, that's anticipated. If people don't know, unfortunately, we're, we're again in the red, Millis, and we hope to tail this in the next few weeks. But that's, you know, we're, it could be because of variants that are circulating, household transmission, from what I understand is a big factor. But we ask people to again, understand that virus is still out there and small percentages of the population have been vaccinated, but we still have to be very vigilant. So anything to do with sports, especially after schools, you know, gatherings or festivities, you just have to keep in mind that we're still in a high-risk state and that you should act accordingly with the COVID protocols.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board or anyone in the public?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Well, we continue to lean on you and the folks in the, the Health Department, John, and keep up the good work, keep us informed. We are scheduling a, a Select Board's meeting next Monday as well, so we'll probably ask you to come back and update us. This is to help people stay current as to what's going on, not only around the world and around the state, but also what's going on here in Millis. So thank you very much for all your efforts and the efforts of everybody in the Board of Health, because it's really been a great service to the community.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a request by a group that's pulling together for the Millis Beautification Day, which unfortunately, last year, we weren't able to hold. This year, we have a group that has worked very hard to develop a plan and to adapt that plan to the current conditions to make sure that we can hold this in a safe and reasonable way. So what I'd like to do is, do we have, who do we have on the, on the call who'd like to speak to this? Jennifer?
Jen Donahue.
Yes, yes, we can.
Great. I just have a brief statement to read for you.
Sure.
Thank you, Select Board, and good evening. I'm Jen Donahue, Millis Beautification Day co-chair, along with Janet Gashler, co-chair. I represent Millis Lions Club, Janet, Millis Garden Club. Both clubs have sponsored this event since 2004. We ask residents to show community spirit and pride in Millis by supporting a cleanup on Saturday, April 24th, 9:00 a.m. to noon. In the past, the event has had approximately 125 volunteers who sign waivers and get assigned sites at the town hall the morning of the cleanup. Mindful of the coronavirus this year, we plan to have a touchless Millis Beautification Day. To eliminate a large gathering, we have set up a Millis Beautification Facebook page with information and facts about the event. Volunteers can email us to sign up in advance. They will be assigned work sites by us via email and an attached waiver prior to the event. Site support vehicles from the Lions Club and the Garden Club will be at each site at 9:00 a.m. with hand sanitizer, extra tools, safety vests for roadside sites. Site support will monitor sites till volunteers leave. The DPW will coordinate the pickup of trash and debris as they have done in the past. Our site list remains largely the same this year. We generally have four to six people working near the schools, sports fields, road sides, and other public spaces where social distancing can be maintained and everyone will be reminded to mask up. To sum up, we envision a morning where volunteer workers arrive at their assigned site at 9:00 a.m., where a site support person will be there from the Lions Club or the Garden Club, ready to direct workers, remind to mask up, and safe distance. We hope we have adequately addressed any questions or concerns with the health and safety of Millis Beautification Day volunteers, and I thank you for your time. If you have any questions, Janet and I could answer them.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. We have, the board is at this point going to be asked to ask any questions we might have and then vote to approve the, the event. It's not that we've, in other words, the use of town resources to support the citizens here are looking forward to this beautification day. Let me just indicate from my perspective, I greatly appreciate the work that you've done to try to accommodate the, the health issues that everybody faces. Part of the, I don't want to call it the high point, but a critical point often in the past has been the ability to gather on the front of town hall and get your assignments and whatnot, and that's just not going to be possible. So based upon the information that you've provided to us, and that has been, we had the health folks take a look at it and the other department heads, everybody's in support of it. Seems like a very reasonable approach, given, given where we stand, and also given, I think, and John McPhee could weigh in, you know, the, the state guidelines, which are now been liberalized somewhat, certainly for outdoor events, would indicate that what you guys are proposing, you folks are proposing, is clearly well within the guidelines. So I think it's a, it's a great effort, and I know it's more steps than you'd like to have to take, but it's terrific. So any other questions from the members of the board?
Not really, other than just to say I applaud the effort, and I think it's an excellent opportunity for everyone to work in the betterment of the town. But thank you very much, Jennifer, and everyone else who's involved with this.
I just wanted to say thank you for all your work, and I know my family looks forward to participating again this year.
This is John from Board of Health. I might add that talking with the state, they were encouraging these types of events done safely, they should be, they should be fine, and they should be a great addition to the community.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you. Again, what we're trying to do is make sure that this is a coordinated effort, that we, you know, dotted all our i's and crossed all our t's, and it looks like we're in reasonably good shape that way. So if I could, I think if there's any other questions, I'm happy to take them. Otherwise, I'd take a motion for the, from the board to approve the request.
I move that we approve the request for Millis Beautification Day on Saturday, April 24th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the application for the celebration of Millis Beautification Day on Saturday, April 24th, at 9 o'clock. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. Before we leave you though, I would ask Maureen if you could go back to the screen chair.
Mm-hmm. Sorry, hold on.
And scroll down to this, the.
Oh, okay.
To the slide, which is, which we were given to show kind of what the logo's looking like and whatnot.
Oh, okay. Hold on. That?
There we go.
How do I?
If you right-click on it and then select rotate clockwinds in the middle.
Here we go. So Janet, again, this is, this is now an opportunity, if you could just quickly go through this, this gives some good information. We probably would like to share some additional information starting tomorrow, so, but maybe you could just go through this again to reinforce the message.
Well, a lot of the messaging will be on the Facebook page, but definitely, you know, we're, we're looking for groups, and a lot of the groups will be coming from, via the schools, and we have a lot of support getting the message out, and we will continue to, to, you know, be up to date with the CDC guidelines and mask up and just bring your own water, you know, we'll, your garden tools, and I'll continually update the Facebook page, along with Janet and the Garden Club and Millis Lions Club with so much information that people could use to protect themselves, not just from coronavirus, but from poison IV and just the things that you might come across as you're out there picking up trash.
Terrific. So again, how many sites do you have that people can sign up for?
Generally, what they have, about 27 sites. So there might be more on that reference that I gave you guys, but prior, we'll be going around to all the different sites and narrowing it down to the ones that really need the work. And depending on how many volunteers, we will be putting them on various site lists, and we'll just get out there, and there's a lot to clean up, but it's, it's been very organized for many years, and I've only been doing this for about two years, and it was canceled, so, but I have a lot of people that have been doing it for many years that are helping me, thankfully.
You picked quite a time to sort of take over, didn't you?
I did, and the first year, the, the date got changed rather, very close to the event, and I had a business trip I had to attend, so this could be my first Millis Beautification Day.
Okay.
You'll see me out there. I'll be there.
Terrific. All right, well, again, this, we're happy to approve this. We have some additional graphics and things that we can share with the community on our website, just to make sure that we're supporting the event and the people have the information that they need. And you have a Facebook page of your own, so as everybody knows, I am the most non-Facebook person that you'll ever meet, so, but I'll take your word for it. So whatever we can do to help from here on in, that'd be great.
And I'll, we'll definitely be putting posters up, the flyers up throughout the community, and we also have a lot of signage that we put on in different areas, on front lawns and businesses that give us permission.
Great.
To advertise the event and the date. So there's several ways, other than Facebook, to be aware of the event.
Okay. Terrific. We have a meeting on the 5th and also on the 12th. Is that right, Mike? Do we have a meeting on the 12th?
That's correct. 5th and 12th.
So I would invite you to come back on the 12th as part of the announcement phase, give us an update, and you can reinforce the message that night too, if you're available.
I appreciate that, and I'll make myself available.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda, more a little early, but is Mr. Merrick on or Mr. Roach?
Tom is.
Yep, just unmuting. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
If you're ready to go ahead, we, we could, again, take a look at this request you have for us to support your LIP proposal.
Okay, I'm just not sure. Mark, are you on by any chance? Mark O'Hagan?
Uh-uh, no.
No, he, he should be here. I told him seven, but.
Yeah, okay. No, I don't want to, I mean, we're ahead of the, we're a little bit ahead of ourselves, so I don't want to, this is such an unusual thing for us to be ahead of schedule.
Mark O'Hagan.
Calling Mark Cooperman.
I'm sure I can get him on in a couple minutes.
Okay. Well, maybe, let me just take a look here.
Mark O'Hagan.
Calling Mark Cooperman.
Why don't you mute yourself until he gets on? We'll come back to you at seven.
Okay.
I'm going to jump a little bit to the outdoor dining extension proposal for Mr. Weiss. I think we could, even though it's scheduled for a bit later, I think we can probably go ahead and consider that if you're available. Yeah, Mr. Weiss is on.
I am, Mr. Chairman, and thank you very much. Bob Weiss, Economic Development Planning Director for the town. Last June, when the governor allowed restaurants to reopen with outdoor dining, the town quickly adopted a policy that allowed Millis restaurants to swiftly amend their already permitted alcohol license and operating site plans in order to relocate their serving operations outdoors, which allowed safe dining for Millis residents during the pandemic. Five restaurants submitted plans to the town's administration, and each one was granted an outdoor dining permit according to its specific plan, and no, no fee was associated with this application. However, that order expired in November. Last Monday, the Commonwealth implemented Phase Four of its reopening plan, so that includes outdoor dining. So this evening, I'm asking that the town, through the Select Board, extend the expedited permitting that it issued back in 2020 to the same five establishments. So we're asking that the board extend permits to each restaurant as long as their plans for reopening have not changed from last year. So this makes the process quick and simple for the restaurants to reopen, pick up outdoor dining from Millis residents to enjoy safe dining where they left off last year.
Okay, great. So the request is really to have us extend or renew, or I guess it doesn't make that much difference.
I think it'd be extend.
Extend, okay. Because they all demonstrated their interest and willingness to open with outdoor dining, and they submitted plans as to how that would be set up. So it'd be using the same information to extend these, these permits.
Yes, and it was diligently reviewed. Each application was diligently reviewed from many parts of the staff.
Yep. Well, it seemed to be quite successful, and hopefully it was of some benefit to our, our businesses here in town who wanted to do that. So questions from the board?
No questions.
None.
Okay, well, then I would, if there are no questions, I would take a motion.
I move that we extend the outdoor dining as per the government's, the governor's notice as of April 1st this year, based on the way it was set up last year and per the governor's note of March 29th, 2021.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded for the board to extend the outdoor dining permits to those five establishments here in Millis that were granted these permits in 2020. So I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you very much.
So if you could reach out to those firms, just to let them know that the local licensing is under control. So I would ask a question as to, just to clarify and maybe to make sure everybody knows, for any, any restaurant that decides it wants, that didn't do it last time, but would like to, like to do it this time, we should instruct them to do what?
They should give the administrators office a call, and we can send an application to them, and we can go through the same process that we did last, last year.
Good. I mean, we're, we're still committed to everyone to see if we can expedite these things, because the sooner our local businesses can open in a safe way, the better off the community is as a whole. So I wanted to make sure everyone understood that this is not just restricted to those five establishments that asked for it last time. We're willing to consider new applicants as well with this streamlined approach.
That's right.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Roach, is your colleague on yet, or?
He is. Mark's here.
Okay, good. So why don't we then switch back to the 1344 Main Street Cabo No LIP agreement request? And just to refresh everybody's recollection, we were considering this at our last meeting. We asked to allow the board members some time to think about it, also to review the full application, all of which we have. So at this point, if you could just briefly renew for the board and the public what it is the request is, and then I can ask the board members if they have any further questions before we take an action.
Okay, Mark, do you want to go over that a little bit? Sure, sure. The, the project is proposed for 20 townhomes, five of which will be affordable and sold to qualified first-time homebuyers. The affordable prices these days for a two-bedroom unit is about, I think 258 was the number as part of the application. That could vary a little bit based on interest rates and pricing and such. So the application that's in front of you outlines really the conceptual design plans, homestyles, as well as, as other information. What we're asking for tonight, if the board decides to approve and to support the project, then you would essentially be signing off on the application and endorsing it as it goes forward to DHCD. DHCD then does a review on the completeness of the application. They review all the financial, preliminary financial information, make sure that they deem that to be appropriate. At the meeting last week, we talked about the waiver, and I, I believe the board approved it last week, for the land valuation, so that we won't have to do an appraisal on the property. That should streamline the process a little bit. With DHCD, they are still pretty backed up with things. So I'm guessing it'll still be probably 60 to 90 days before we get a determination from them, assuming they issue a positive determination. That would be a site approval letter, and it's that approval letter that would give us the necessary standing to file an application with the Zoning Board of Appeals for a comprehensive permit. So this is kind of the, the first step, recognizing that there is support for the project locally, and then, but we do need to come back and get, and go through the full permitting process with ZBA, where they'd be evaluating drainage and planning and architecture and all of those things. So this is a conceptual package, and there'll be more details provided at the next go-around with, with ZBA.
Okay, great. Just a couple of quick questions, then I'll ask my colleagues to also ask questions that they may have. Just to clarify, again, there's 20 units in this development, is that correct?
Correct.
And five of them will be affordable?
Correct.
And then the other 15, if I do my math right, will be market value?
That is correct.
And the market value was in the 400 range somewhere, as I recall, with the applications that.
Yeah, but I think 429.9 is the, is the anticipated price at this point. It's just what's reflected in the application.
So the affordable units are, you know, significantly less expensive, which is the whole point really of the local initiative program. Could you just describe to me briefly the process of qualifying for one of these affordable units and what, what, you know, what standing Millis, current Millis residents have in terms of potentially purchasing one of these?
Yes, so there is a, a local preference that will be part, that's part of the application in which we'd be seeking on the behalf of, of Millis residents, that's 70%. That 70% of the homes would be designated for local preference. So essentially, we do a lottery, and three out of the five, um, would be designated to, uh, to Millis residents. To, to be qualified, they need to comply with the income guidelines, and those range from, um, about, uh, I think the maximum for a family of four is, uh, uh, 96,000 these days, it's gone up quite a bit. Um, and that, that's for a family of four. For, uh, a family of two or three, given that it's a two-bedroom unit, is, uh, ranges from, uh, about 70 to 80,000. So the income limits have, uh, have gone up quite a bit over the last few years as incomes in the area in general have, uh, have increased. Uh, to apply, people need to do a pretty, you know, pretty thorough application, provide tax returns, provide, uh, uh, 1099s or W9s. Uh, they need, I mean, W2s, they need to provide, um, current pay stubs. We look at, uh, bank statements, uh, both for, you know, checking accounts to verify, you know, that the money's going in, they're consistent with what their income, uh, statements are. Uh, we also look at if there's an asset limitation in addition to an income limitation. Uh, so the maximum amount of assets that people can have and qualify is, is $75, $75,000. So, yeah, the intent is that we're looking for people within those, those income guidelines, and also people that, um, are, are of modest means in general in terms of, uh, total resources that they have behind them. So we do work with, with lenders to help them get, um, uh, attractive first-time homebuyer financing, so we can help them with low-down payment programs and, uh, cost assistance in some cases, depending on what their circumstances are. Um, but it is a very thorough process, and they need to provide everything before they can participate in the lottery, uh, have a pre-approve, uh, have a pre-approval from a mortgage as well, so. Um, and on the outreach, we will focus on local publications as well as, uh, a substantial minority outreach. Um, the, uh, through the lottery firm, they have a very extensive, uh, website as well, with about, you know, 13,000 to 15,000 people that are active members actively looking for housing, so. Um, I, I believe we'll be able to find a really good, a really good fit for people for these, for this product in town. Um, about the gist?
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I understood the process, because I'm reading the material. I, you know, you did talk about some of the preferences, and certainly if it goes forward and there's an opportunity for Millis residents to, um, take this, you know, purchase one of these properties, that would be great. Obviously, we welcome anyone, but, um, that's terrific, okay.
Yeah.
Questions from the board?
I don't have too many questions at this point. I mean, the project should go forward, is going to have to go through the ZBA as well as meet the requirements for sewer and everything else, but, uh, those are all hurdles that the developer will have to deal with. On the whole, it looks good, and I think it meets all the questions that we asked earlier.
Okay, great. Ms. Underhill?
Oops, sorry.
Hold on just a second, let me ask if Ms. Underhill has any questions.
I actually do not. Um, I echo what Pete said, thank you.
Okay, yes, Mr. Roach?
Yeah, I was just wondering, Mark, is that 70%, is that, uh, is that limited to, can we only have 70% of Millis residents? Or can they, can it go up to 100%?
It could go up to 100%. The way that the, the lottery is structured, you, you essentially have two lotteries or two pools. So the, uh, people that qualify for local preference in Millis are in the local pool. Uh, we pull out that for, I think would be three of the homes that would, would constitute for the 70%. Um, so everybody that is in the local pool also goes into the open pool, which where they'd be qualified, you know, where everybody else would be in for the, for the last two homes. So theoretically, you could get all, uh, Millis residents in it. Um, you know, it really depends on what the overall participation is, but they get those, they get those three, and then, um, uh, again, everybody that's in the local pool gets a, a second bite at the apple, so to speak.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, other questions from the board or from the public? All right, so then, uh, what's being asked is for us to, um, vote to, um, support the application for this local initiative plan, uh, Affordable Housing Program, I'm sorry, the Local Initiative Program, um, since, and I just confirm, uh, on the vote that we have waived the, uh, land valuation requirement. So I would make that motion to, um, for the board to, uh, support the Local Initiative Program for, uh, 1344 Main Street, and to, um, re, um, ratify the, uh, the agreement to waive the land valuation process.
Second.
So it has been moved and seconded. Uh, I will call the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion's carried unanimously. Uh, now, the letter, the letter of, um, support, is it better to come from a member of the board, or the board chair, or from the town administrator, or does it make any difference?
I don't think it really makes any difference. The, uh, the, the signature on the application, uh, should be the chief elected official, so, which I believe is, is yourself as the, the chairman of the Select Board. Um, but the letter, uh, could come from the, the town manager on behalf of the town. Um, and if it's possible, if we could please get three, uh, copies with an, an original signature on the application. That's what, uh, that's what DHCD requests for, so that.
Okay, well, I'll work with the town administrator to get the, what do they call them? Wet signatures, termite, that I learned when I was buying a house. But any event, uh, I will work with, um, Mr. Gazinski to try and get this done. Um, okay, great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, have a nice night.
We appreciate you coming back.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda. Um, if Andrew is present and Mr. McKay, are you, you gentlemen here? Any?
We are. Sorry. So unusual, being on at 10 past 7:00. Um.
Well, Mr. Mr. McKay?
Yes.
We're gonna do a little song and dance to fill up the time?
Here we go.
Or we're gonna ask you folks to come forward, Andrew with his, you know, new uniform on. Um, no matter what happens, we can't get rid of Andrew, right? I mean, that seems to be the way it works.
That's the way it works.
Speak up, Andrew.
We're pleased, uh, to be a part of the meeting, and I'm glad to be back in front of the board, it's been too long.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, this is a presentation to the board on the flood mitigation grant, and what's going on with that. So I'll turn it over to Mr. McKay initially, and then he can introduce Andrew.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this is something that Bob Weiss has been working on a little bit longer than I have. Um, and Andrew has proposed and filed a grant on our behalf with the town administrator's approval. Um, so let's let Andrew, uh, go through it. He has a very short slide presentation, and then after that, Bob and myself and Mike will be available with Andrew to bring questions you may have.
Very good, thank you, all right. Andrew?
I appreciate the, the opportunity to share a little bit about what, um, Jim and Bob and I have been working on related to the flood mitigation or flood resilience program for the town of Millis. Um, I believe that both Jim and Bob shared with you some of the progress today at a previous meeting, so I don't want to spend too much time updating the board on, um, what is proposed, but I'm happy to answer questions. Um, today, what we're hoping to do is receive the board's input in a couple of areas. Um, the first area is related to education and outreach of Millis residents and, and folks in the community. Um, a really large component of the program is related to engaging the community and, um, specifically targeting groups that are vulnerable to climate impacts and flooding, as well as those who are considered, um, disadvantaged, whether that relates to English as a second language, or minorities, um, or income. Um, so there is not a recognized, uh, community, according to the, the, the group that issued this grant within Millis that falls into that designation, so we're looking for input from this board on, um, some really good strategies that would be effective for educating the, uh, climate risks and flooding risks, and the town's efforts to mitigate those risks in the future. Um, the second area is, of course, um, we're looking for support from this board on the grant filing, which is anticipated for, um, early May. The grant application period just opened this morning, um, and it will extend until May 7th. So we will be requesting from the board, uh, a letter of support. Uh, and I'm happy to go through some of the slides that we have prepared today, but those are the, the two key outcomes, as well as answering your questions about this project and, um, what its benefits are. Uh, would it be okay if I spent a minute or two providing some background on the project? Before, do I need to question and answer it? Yes, that'd be fine, go ahead. Um, so Millis is a part of 15 communities, working with the Charles River Watershed Association on a regional flood mitigation project. Um, obviously, stormwater management and flooding is a really big priority for the town of Millis. Um, it's an area where the town invests a lot of money, and, um, the whole purpose of the ongoing regional project with the Charles River Watershed Association and the other 15 communities in this region is to identify the, the strategies that help mitigate flooding and improve water quality and really reduce risks for, for folks in this area. Um, we know that there's a really strong relationship too between stormwater management, um, flooding and water quality too, so there's some opportunities here to find some strategies that achieve multiple benefits, whether that's improving water quality in the rivers, or in your drinking water, or reducing flooding, or providing recreation. Um, and the reason why this is so timely, um, we, we've, we've talked about this over the years, but the reason why this is so timely is that the ongoing regional program will be providing the town of Millis with a really good foundation for doing some complex modeling of how flooding will change over time in the river and in the, the, the town's drainage system. Um, so there's some really good value there from the ongoing work, um, from that regional program. There's also an opportunity to be a little bit, um, proactive with reducing future risk when it comes to climate change. Uh, so that's really the impetus, is, is to address multiple different challenges within this community. I know Bob's been a part of, um, the MVP, or Municipal Vulnerability Prevention Program, um, for several years, and we've met a stakeholder engagement process and workshop that many of you were a part of. Um, so really, this is, um, a continuation of that local effort as well as a regional effort. Um, I guess before, um, closing out the presentation, um, I'll just mention that the town's done a lot to address local known flooding issues, and I know Jim, uh, has given this board several presentations about, um, ongoing capital projects, um, to reduce flooding in known areas, and this project is really to get at, and look at, at future flood risks as well, both related to, um, riverine flooding, so flooding from the Charles and those, as well as flooding from the drains that's gonna come.
Okay. So, uh, in terms of the, just the, um, the problem, I will, I'll ask you questions, ask my colleagues if they have questions that they would like to pose. Um, and I know that we've done a fair amount of work that, yes, was, uh, through the efforts of Bob and Jim and you and others to try and get our community engaged in this activity, since we are, you know, there's a lot of wetlands, and we're, we are certainly, uh, vulnerable from the flooding point of view. Um, I'd like to, just, I could understand what, if any, connection there is between this kind of activity and the ongoing efforts from FEMA to redraw, if you will, the floodplain maps. Uh, we've gotten in from, we've gotten, uh, some outreach from FEMA as well, indicating that there's, they're working on this project. This is a national effort that they're doing, asking for us to have, we have any comments? Um, so if you could, if there is a, how, how does this relate to what they're up to? Um, because I think that question on floodplain mapping, you know, it has an impact not just on risk, but it also has impact on property value, frankly, of those who one day wake up and find themselves in the floodplain, as opposed to in a flood, which is a different thing.
Absolutely. Um, I, I can think of, um, this process in terms of outcomes, so I think you, you really nailed it. Um, Mr. Chairman, by, by explaining that FEMA will be providing a, a flood map, that, that paper or digital record where the floodplain is, the extent of the, they call it a 100-year flood event, or one in 100-year flood event, or one in 500-year flood event. Um, the real value of the, the project that is being proposed for the town of Millis is that it's locally specific, in that it is looking at current and future climate risks, and it is also a tool for, um, evaluating a number of different strategies that will be effective at mitigating the risks of flooding in the future. So it, it's really a tool and a process for, um, soliciting input from the community on, on where there are issues, or where there might be issues in the future, and what strategies would be most effective to your community. Uh, FEMA provides a really valuable resource and tool, um, but it's a little bit of a different outcome.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chair, with that, with the mapping, um, the town has a right to, um, not, not reject the maps, but we have a right to add or delete on those maps, and this project will help us get to that, to that goal. If not, they'll just implement, and they'll just give us the maps and say, here you go.
Right, that's exactly what I was trying to get at. Uh, thank you for getting that clarification, because we've been, the community, the town, has been offered the opportunity, like every other municipality, to comment, and that doesn't mean they'll change anything, but it's an opportunity to have at least some input into the, into the, the drawing of the maps, and as significantly, or even more significantly, I suppose, is developing mitigation strategies so that the, the risk is minimized for the, for the people of Millis, the property owners and whatnot, so. Um, okay, great, any other questions from my colleagues on the board that they'd like to address?
I do not have any questions.
Um, Mr. Jim?
Mr. Jermaine, yeah?
Excuse me, I'm having a hard time seeing it. The, I look at the MVT action grants and the estimated costs.
Yeah.
Um, and basically, what I am interpreting out of this is, if we participate in this program, the budget estimate that we're incurring is 37,500 to 50,000, and then looking at town contributions, is that the 37 to 50, or is that in addition to?
But Andrew, you can, and then I'll follow up with it.
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll clarify, um, there are two ways to, uh, there are two big buckets for, for contributions, both, um, the in-kind labor that, that folks like Jim and Bob and their staff will be providing, as well as the cash contributions. So, Mr. Jermaine, um, you, you identified the range, um, it's not, it's not additive, it's, it is within that range of 37,500 to 50,000 dollars of estimated, um, town contributions, and that can be split in those two buckets, whether that's through staff time or through, um, a cash match. Um, the EEA, which is, um, a mask EEP agency for environmental affairs, Energy Environmental Affairs, provides the other 75% of project costs.
Okay, and let me get clarification on this. What basically is happening is, just take one of them, Drainage System Data Collection and Analysis, 40 to 50,000 dollars. That process is one that, what, your firm would guide us? And these are fees that we would be paying to your firm, or how does that work?
This is a reimbursement grant program, so if awarded, and if the town chooses to, um, proceed with the project, um, the town would incur the cost and request a reimbursement from the state. On a, a periodic basis, it can be monthly. On a periodic basis, it can be monthly. With the budget itself, through, and I welcome Jim or Bob to jump in, with the budget put into the FY '22 plan, or through the labor of the town staff.
Perhaps I didn't clarify that. Is this money, is this going to your services in your, in your firm?
The breakdown of what we would do is, we found that in-kind services that the DPW actually, Ian, myself, and Bob actually put towards it, would reduce that $37,000 to the, you know, down to almost no funding, if at all, half or a quarter of our time. So, and the rest of it, yes, would go towards, we would pay towards Brown and Caldwell for the services of getting the report and the final analysis done. Almost most of it would go towards them. Our part would be the $37,000, and again, which, if we choose, and that, we haven't figured out yet exactly how much we're going to do on our own, because the filing date on the project is, did open today. But before the board would okay a contract between, of an acceptance of this, we would have a set, this is what it's going to cost the town, and this is what we will pay Brown and Caldwell for their services.
Okay, that helps to clarify. So, these are estimated costs that...
Mr. Jermaine, can I just interrupt for a second?
Yes.
Like, just for folks who are listening in, Maureen, could you move this screen up to the MVP action grant, estimated cost? There you go. Okay, thanks.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, the one with the blue in it. There you go. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, sorry, Pete, go ahead.
No, that's fine. Sorry about that. So, these estimated costs are, Jim, and I appreciate your clarification there, costs that, in part, assuming you have the resources and talents in your department, I'm saying, assuming.
Mm-hmm.
And these would still be estimated costs, but they could be, in fact, costs that your department might be able to handle. But in, in the world of reality, more than likely, what we would be doing is you'd be doing a portion, and Andrew's firm would be doing a portion. And in the worst case, assuming you can come up with 25%, which it sounds like you can in terms of in-kind, then the town's bill would be in the order of $37,000 to $50,000. Is that a fair...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
And, I hate to beat this one, but these are all tasks that are, in essence, being requested or required by FEMA if we move forward on this process?
I'm going to let Bob answer that question. Bob's, he's our resident expert attending all the classes and stuff like that, so I'll let Bob get to that.
Right. What this is for, these costs are, is what these, basically what the state is going to recommend, I guess you would say. It's what, we've determined that what we need to do is figure out, is figure out future vulnerability to stormwater runoff, as climate change affects rain, the rains in Millis with more frequency, and with greater, with greater intensity. So, the way to show that, and we show that to the state, because the state's going to reimburse us later on for more action grants. But what we're doing here is we're establishing, this is what it's, this is what the damage could possibly be. And so, it is the state, not FEMA, but it is the state that wants to look at this kind of information. And so, we figure, oh, we'll give them a report with the information that they will need, especially to make, to help us make future requests to prevent specific damage in specific areas. So this is what the state is requesting. It will help FEMA in terms of the mapping that they're doing, the floodplain mapping, I'm sure they'll be reviewing, reviewing this. But this is basically what the state is, the information that the state is going to get.
Thank you for that clarification. So basically, there are four tasks that you've identified that would meet the state requirements if we addressed them as per this formula, and this is what you estimate the cost would be, so that at least we then meet the state requirements and have the first phase, if you will, of a plan in place that is recognized by the state and allows us to move forward in concert with whatever their future guidelines, plans, and whatever else might be. Okay. Sorry about taking so much time, but I just wanted to try to get clarification on it. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess what we're asking for is that the board supports us filing for this grant, and again, we would come back before, before we would ask the town administrator to sign the contract, we would again come back to the board for the funding source of it. So we're not, this isn't just saying that, okay, we're committing the DPW or any other department, you know, the estimate of $37,500 to $50,000. We would come back with a more, you know, a on-paper plan of how we're going to pay that $37,500 to $50,000. This is for us to have Andrew continue to file a grant and give you enough, and I don't think he's done, Andrew, did you file it yet, or?
We have not, we've done our homework with regard to identifying what this process will look like. I think we're here today to receive input and feedback, and over the next five weeks or so, we'll be tailoring this scope of work and this application to the needs of the town of Millis before filing before May 7th.
Ms. Underhill, have any questions you'd like to pose?
Sorry. No, I do not have any at this time.
Just so that, again, I want to make sure that it's clear. What you're asking for is the board's support for the grant application, and the project has a budget, and the maximum amount that'll be paid by the grant is $150,000, right?
Yes.
So the balance is going to be our obligation, and of course, I assume that even if we are approved, we are not going to get the grant unless we agree to pay our portion.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's really, you're asking for the board's support in filing the application for this action grant with an estimated project of up to $200,000.
That is correct, yes.
If you could go, Maureen, just on the next slide, which I think gives us a little bit of more background on the timetable here. So, we're talking about the grant application here in April, in May, we would have, we would have presented our proposal to, to the state, and by September, they would have graciously awarded the entire grant to us, or whatever they're going to do, and then it's up to us, most likely at the fall town meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, to appropriate our share of the money if we have to put up cash as well as services in kind. Is that, is that a reasonable guess?
Yes, that's exactly correct.
So, the real acceptance is not going to come until November's town meeting, when we appropriate money for our match, assuming we get the grant? Okay. And as Mr. Jermaine indicated, there are other checkpoints along the road here for us to make sure that this is, that we're effectively implementing this grant. Okay?
Actually, do you have a question now, if I could, please?
Sure, yeah, please.
So I'm not sure if, this is a silly question, but if, if we approve this and the wheels go in motion, and then it's going to go to the November town meeting for, you know, the town's portion of the costs, what if it doesn't pass a town meeting?
Any contract isn't signed without the idea of funding, so the town has a right to not fund the grant, and just, we just don't have the funding to move forward, and that's, we just don't, we don't move forward with it.
Okay. But is there, isn't there work being done by Andrew's firm in between, or no?
Andrew, if you want to?
We would be happy to start work on any portion of this project, but that would not be until the work is approved.
Okay.
We don't have any existing contract with the town.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's the idea of, 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 Brown and Caldwell will start the grant process with the hopes that, you know, the select board will approve the town administrator signing a contract with them to proceed with the work.
Yeah, I would assume that this is a stormwater-type charge.
Again, you're correct, yes.
Because that's exactly what stormwater is designed to deal with. Okay. Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, Captain McGinnis, 78 Allen Road. I'm wondering if one of the mitigations on this grant would be, I know the floodplain, especially on Causeway Street and all the areas that, but the Bogusso Brook have been the numerous beaver dams, and is there anything in this grant that would allow immediate lowering of the floodplain if some of these, I know there's eight beaver dams in a quarter of a mile on the Bogusso that's now becoming a lake and killing all the fish and everything, Mr. Chair. Is any of this part of the grant going to rectify that situation to lower the floodplain, especially on Causeway Street? Thanks.
Andrew, do you want to address that?
But Andrew? Thank you very much. I appreciate the question. That kind of natural structure is really impacting the local drainage system and the natural hydrology, so that could be something that is incorporated into the model. It's an important question, because at the regional scale, which, there is an ongoing project to model the middle and upper Charles River watershed right now, I'm not sure whether or not that kind of structure would be incorporated into a model, because it's not something that you can provide the elevation of without going out into the field and collecting the data. If it was important to this group or to the town, that is certainly something that we could incorporate into the scope of work and identify how the beaver structures are impacting drainage and the flow of the river. In terms of rectifying the situation, I don't believe that there's any physical construction being proposed under the current proposal, but identifying strategies and testing the effectiveness is, and coming up with some conceptual designs also is a part of this project.
And that's why, Mr. Chairman...
Thank you. Yes, Mr. McKay? I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's great to have meetings like this that we hear outside, you know, public interest and bring forth, and we can certainly look at that.
Well, as my former colleague indicates, this is not the first time that we've been having to deal with this phenomenon at the moment. So, anything that we can do to identify and to make sure that the report addresses the issues that we have, I think is certainly, certainly worthwhile. Any other comments? Then I would ask if the board member, is the board member willing to make a motion to approve this grant application?
Mr. Jim?
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve this 2021 MVP action grant for the town of Millis to allow it to proceed and see where it goes for the future.
Second.
So it's a move and seconded for the town of Millis to approve the grant application and provide the necessary support for that application. So I will poll the board on that motion. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. So I'll ask Mr. McKay and Mr. Gazinski to work together to make sure we give the appropriate response, and we look forward to working with Andrew and his firm in putting together this grant application and hopefully being awarded the grant ultimately. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next line we have on our agenda is, again, a little bit ahead of schedule, which is, which is a phenomenon I'm sure I'll run off the rails before long. But Mr. Weiss is here, so I don't think it'd be inconvenient that we had asked him to speak to the Green Communities Grant Update for 2021.
Thank you.
There we go.
You're right. Well, first of all, I'm going to ask if we can put this off until the 5th, the meeting of the 5th. And we're working, as you know, the Energy Committee right now is working on the Green Communities competitive grant for 2021. We're looking at, right now, at 11 projects that we would like to fund for, about $140,000. I won't go into them right now. What the Energy Committee would like to do is they are going to meet on this Wednesday, this Wednesday, to discuss those, and I'm going to meet with Mr. Gazinski and with the Energy Committee, so we can make sure we have everything funded, and the funding will come from the green, most of it, of course, from the green communities, some will come from substantial amount, will come from the utilities, some is going to come from the town this year. So we want to make sure we have all those, the table set. Before we make the presentation, I was mistakenly thinking that this was going to be the last meeting of the Select Board before we had to submit, and I wanted to make sure the Select Board approved. But the process is usually that we go to the Energy Committee, then we present it to the Select Board, and then we can have the Select Board sign the, sign off on the grant application. And now, it turns out, since we have a meeting on the 5th, we will have time to do all that, because the grant goes, is submitted on the 9th. So, with that, I would like to say, well, that's your update, and again, miraculously, we get to move on quickly.
Well, okay, we, I'm willing to do that. We are, my objective is to try and keep the agenda on the 5th as slim as possible, so that our board can really get to the extent we have to, you know, the dialogue thoroughly vetting the budget request. But this is, there's a deadline, so therefore, I think, I'd be willing to consider including this on the April 5th agenda, and, because we don't want to miss the deadline. So, we urge you to be succinct, comprehensive, and help us make a decision quickly, so that we can devote the time we need to, to the budget. We're going to be talking about the budget tonight as well, but I think that this board needs to really devote some time to that. So, anyway, we are happy to accommodate, and look forward to meeting with you and your team, or the committee, or the Green Energy Committee, if they're going to be participating at our meeting on the 5th. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So let me do a little bit of review of the agenda here, to see what we might be able to deal with, because we do have two appointments that I would like to keep on, well, one appointment and one item that I want to keep pretty much on target as advertised. If it's possible, Mr. Gazinski, we could jump to item 21-090, which is the ratification of the employment contract with the finance director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we do have some good news this evening. The board has been in negotiation with our finance director, Carol Johnston, who's been doing an outstanding job for the town over the past three years. And in your packet is the agreed-upon language of the free-year contract with the finance director, which the board approved in your last executive session, and it's here this evening for formal ratification. And I believe... I believe that the finance director is, is on Zoom meeting as well. Uh, and just want to say that, um, the finance director has done an outstanding job for the town over the last three years, has instituted a lot of improvements to our financial systems and has been, uh, extremely helpful to me in, um, not only the annual budget process, but in, in financial planning as well as uh, keeping day-to-day track of our budgetary status. Um, and again, I'm happy to report, uh, to the residents of the community that she has agreed to stay with us for another three years, and we are very happy she has decided to do so, and, um, uh, this, this document is here this evening for the board's formal public ratification.
Okay, uh, Carol, would you like to have, you have anything to say about, um, the contract agreement?
Well, I, I think it's fair. I think that, well, we all came to the, a, a good understanding and that, um, I look forward to working with everybody in the town for the next three years.
Okay, questions, uh, comments from the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jermaine?
I will say, I have had the pleasure of working with Carol for her entire tenure in various capacities. Uh, she has brought a new level of rigor, if you will, to our entire financial process, as well as doing it in a timely fashion, so that we've had opportunity in the last couple of years to actually work with budget processes and so on earlier in the year than has been traditional in the past. Uh, she also has a good understanding of the financial issues confronting our town and seems to work well with all the senior members of the management within the town. So overall, I felt very comfortable about where we ended up in negotiations for her contract and look forward to working with her in various capacities over the next three years of her tenure.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Underhill?
Um, yes, I would like to, um, thank Carol for all her hard work. So far, she's been wonderful to work with, and I think she's an asset to this town. And I'm very happy that we had a fair agreement that we were able to reach and that we'll have her for another three years.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would just echo the fact that we did have a negotiation, we came to terms. Um, the, uh, the board and I myself concluded feel as though our ability to retain her over the next three years is, is very important uh, for our community. Not only has she done a good job, but she can lay the foundation not only for uh, the next three years, but for the period beyond that, um, and that's really important. Uh, we've done some really important things from the financial management perspective. Um, the, you know, the, the activity that she's been involved in, her willingness to, uh, accommodate, to deliver what she's expected to deliver, which she has told us that that's gonna continue. Um, the project, particularly the Munis implementation is, is a critical component. Um, and that project has really, you know, it's a project that's behind the scenes, but it's really important for us to maintain a modern financial management system. And it's going to support some of the disclosure information that someday, soon, we will be able to, um, activate through the ClearGov, uh, application so that people will be able to look at not only what the budget is, but what the expenditures are, so again, I think it's, it's great little accomplishment. Look forward to continuing to work with Carol and, uh, have her continue to serve the community, innovate and, uh, lay the groundwork for future success for everyone, so. With that said, I think that, um, I would take a motion from the board to, um, ratify this agreement.
I move that we ratify the employment agreement between the town of Milas and Carol E. Johnston.
I'll second that and say it's for the next three years.
So it has been moved and seconded for the board to, uh, ratify the employment agreement between the town and Carol B. Johnston for the next three-year period uh, in accordance with the documentation presented this evening. So I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. Thank you, Carol, and thank you, team, for, uh, working through the negotiation. Um, I, I think that what I'd like to try to do, because we do have a bit of time before, um, the designated appointment on the enterprise funds, to talk a little bit about, if we can, item 21 dash 89. Now, this is a question that has come to us from our, uh, representative in Congress uh, because as a result of the legislation that is, was passed in Congress, uh, passed by Congress and signed into law by the president, um, there's an opportunity for commu- community project funding for certain projects, um, for communities such as ours. And the the staff from Congressman, the congressman has asked us to identify projects that we think may be of value to the community to determine whether or not we would be able to get some funding at the federal level for these projects. Um, if it takes a little bit more time than we have, then we can come back to it, but I thought it'd be good to try and have this preliminary dialogue or conversation about this. So, Mr. Gazinski, if you could just sort of outline for us the opportunity?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as the information in your packet outlines, um, our congressman, uh, Congressman Akritas has, uh, reached out to us through our state legislative delegation, uh, for, um, really, he is, he is looking for congressional earmark applications from communities within his district. Um, there are, uh, a wide number of possible areas that the town could, could ask for assistance with. Um, I believe from the, uh, from the, what, the information that we received, it's, it's, uh, the congressman's intent to submit up to 10, um, of these, uh, earmarks, um, to Congress, uh, from all of his, uh, municipal, all the municipalities in his district and, um, wanted to bring this to the board for some discussion. Um, we are required, if we have an interest in this, to submit, um, information by April 9th. So wanted to at least have an initial discussion this evening um, with the thought process of, of having a determination as to which item um, we may submit if the board is so interested. Um, at your meeting on April 5th to make a determination on that, so we have that into his office by the 9th. Um, so I just wanted to put it out there this evening, uh, and, uh, you know, get any feedback that the board has. I know that I'll be putting together information after consultation with some of the boards and committees and department heads for the town and submit, um, some ideas for the board at your next meeting, if you would like me to do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Jermaine?
Um, yes, I went through this earlier, and I have to say that items R through, I think it was W, were of great interest to me as they might be useful for this town. Let me give you an example. In item W, it's environmental protection agencies, state and tribal assistance grants for certain water infrastructure projects. Now, one might argue that what we're facing with PFAS might fall into that category. I don't know if it does. I think it requires further explanation, an exploration. But if it did, it could help perhaps to offset some of the infrastructure costs we're facing in that area. I'm also looking at some of the others dealing with water conservation or, um, anticipating, uh, floods. And in that regard, there are certain areas of this town, as was just mentioned by one of our residents, where, based on beaver dams, based on a variety of things, we may in fact be concerned with anticipating potential flood damage and other things. So I think there are a number of items in here that would be of benefit to us if we are of, a mind to move forward on this grant process.
Ms. Underhill?
Um, so is this, is this type of request that we're receiving similar to the one we discussed last time about, you know, a certain, um, a certain amount of money that we would, you know, request a, for our community from the representatives? Is this a similar request or is this something different?
Um, this is, this request, um, is at the federal level versus the state level.
Okay.
I think that's the biggest difference. Uh, and probably the scope of available funding is, is, um, different as well.
Meaning larger?
Yes, the federal scope, I believe, would be considerably larger than the state scope of available funds, so. Um, and, and again, I think the chances of receiving funding are probably less than they are on the state one because there are probably more communities seeking this type of funding, um, from a larger district so that, um, you know, I think they are looking really for ideally a, a single primary request from each community um, with the understanding that, you know, not all communities will be able to move forward with us, um, for consideration. That'll be ultimately up to the congressman to determine which items he believes are either most important or have the greatest chance of getting approval at the federal level.
Thank you.
Um, I, I would just like to comment, um, also, I, I have to say that, uh, I don't recall in my, unfortunately for everybody, many years of work at the, in Milas government. The federal government, I don't remember the last time the federal government was making any earmarks, so whether or not they actually come is another whole, uh, issue, but having said that, I, I agree with Mr. Jermaine that the water issue is, is such a critical one for us that it, that it really, um, for us to not request it would probably be uh, subject to criticism because, you know, this is a big problem. It's not just a problem for us. It's a problem for a lot of people, and so I think that if we could fashion some requests in that area, that'd be great. Um, now, whether or not they're willing to give us $4 million to fix the two wells, I doubt that, but if we could create a, a request that was reasonable and then help us mitigate the issue, I think that would be great. I would like to have the, um, um, have the town administrator reach out to Chiefs of Fire because there's another item here which may or may not apply, which is the COPS Technology and Equipment Grant. Um, I think that that probably is something that we might want to see if there's, um, an opportunity for us to, uh, make a request there. Um, I don't know, you know, since the Army Corps of Engineers owns a lot of Milas, I don't know where, some of these grants that come under the Army Corps of Engineers, I, I, the wording is so big, I have no idea what that means, so. Um, I would focus on the water, uh, issue and with the, with the potential of taking a look at the police grant to see if there's something there that might be, uh, something we want to pursue. Now, we can, we can have a conversation about this tonight and then revisit it in time for the grant. When is the deadline on this one?
Uh, April 9th.
Our efforts to make a, a short agenda for the 5th or, anyway, um, we're not gonna have too many more things on that agenda as far as I can say, but, so I, I think those two are, are probably, um, probably worth looking at. There is grant money for land acquisition. Um, but the, 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 the grant process is, is not gonna meet our times for the 61A property on Village Street. If we're unable to move forward on that, we have to fund that thing by May, so that's not gonna work. So, um, that gives you some feedback, Mr. Gazinski, as to sort of some of the thoughts the board has. Um, again, this is a little bit, it's great to see the request, but it's a little bit, uh, it's not quite breaking new ground, but it's certainly not something where it can just dust off last year's application, so. Um, I don't know if you want to do an outreach to them, say we've got a preliminary list or how, I mean, there's, there's stuff in here that says how you apply, but, um, I, I would think that with respect to those water issues, we've got a lot of information and a lot of data that would back up whatever we're looking for. And I'm sure the chief of police would be able to do the same if we decide to look for some funding in that as well.
Yes, this, this is very helpful. I can certainly, uh, pull together information, um, for, for your packet for your next meeting, uh, and, uh, uh, get some additional information and, and reach out to the congressman's office to try to get some feedback, additional feedback from his office as well.
Um, I think in here somewhere they talked about regional items. Um, that there be, you get some additional points if you have some kind of a regional approach to things. I don't know whether, I don't know where we stand. Are there other communities, neighboring communities that are also in this congressional district that are dealing with PFAS? I don't know if there's enough time to even get together to try and cobble together something that would look like, would, would actually be a little bit more of a regional approach. There's not a lot of time here.
I'm confident there's other communities that will be in this position, but they, they're, they're maybe we're a little bit at the vanguard of it. Um, and it may be difficult to do a, a regional approach in the short timeframe, but it's something we can, we can explore a little bit this week. But it, it would be not extremely likely just because of the deadline.
Well, I guess in the application, we can always point out the fact that this is a, this is not a problem unique to us. It's just that we have a municipal water system that has been particularly vulnerable to this right now, and again, I think we ought to take some credit for being ahead of the game, uh, and see if we can get some, some funding available from the federal government on this. Um, now, granted, it's not their standard that we're having the problem with. Um, because I believe that they still are at the 70 parts per trillion, if I'm not wrong. The EPA is still using that standard, is that? Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Um, but anyway, nothing ventured, nothing gained, right? It's critical for us to try and take steps we want to take, so let, let's look at those two areas, see if there's anything we can develop and try to approve it at our next meeting.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, it's, I think within shouting distance of 8 o'clock. Um, is Mr. Valenti on?
Yep.
I believe he is.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm here.
Thank you. Um, what I'm gonna do first is I'm gonna let the, uh, town administrator introduce this topic, and then, uh, we have a presentation that you prepared for us to take a look at, which we'd ask you to walk through with us. So, Mr. Gazinski, if you could just tee it up, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm sure the board remembers, but for the public, just to, uh, remind everyone that uh, the town did, um, bring on Community Paradigm Associates uh, to assist the town in doing really a, a study of the operations of the Department of Public Works. Uh, they did a very detailed, um, study and issued a report, I think, right around the time that, um, COVID, uh, hit last year. Um, and the one item, uh, within that, that, um, uh, they believed and, and we agreed that really further research was needed was to look at the relative, um, components of the DPW and their funding sources to determine, um, really the appropriate level, uh, of funding sources from the general fund and the various enterprise funds based upon the workload of the individuals at the department as well as, um, expense costs, other indirect costs. And, um, uh, Community Paradigm graciously agreed to, um, put forward an additional 20 hours of, of work to put together the research in this project, which I'm quite certain that, uh, Mr. Valente has gone over on, so. Um, I know he has done very extensive work. So I know he has done very extensive work, has spent a lot of time discussing these issues with various town officials, has put together a number of detailed charts based on information that he's gathered and has been gathered through the finance office and the DPW and all the employees in the DPW. And he is here tonight to discuss those findings and to answer any questions that the board has in regards to his research and results.
Very good. Okay. We'll pass the baton on to Mr. Valenti.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I know I, I met at our earlier work, two of the board members, but not board member Underhill, so it's, it's nice to have the opportunity to speak to you as well for the first time. And I'm going to ask Karen, because I think she's controlling the slides.
Yep.
To Karen, if you could just go back to the acknowledgement slides and I'll just start from there, slide three. So as, as Mike mentioned, you know, this is follow-up work to work we did just about a year ago and we presented to the, to the board at that time, our, our study of the DPW. And, and so this is some follow-up work, looking at the enterprise funds and in fact, are the, is the cost analysis of each of those funds established correctly? And I, and I just have to point out because there was a tremendous amount of data that I asked for when we were doing this analysis and, and I wanted to identify each of the people who were heavily involved in, in pulling together that analysis, including names that you recognize, people on your staff, as well as folks from Maya, your insurer, through Cabot Rich Strategies, and even your actuary, Parker Elmore, who I've worked with in other communities, who was very helpful in pulling together some of the OPEB portion of the analysis. So it was a real team effort. I had the easy part because I didn't have to gather the data, I just had to put it all together in a format that hopefully is, is useful to the, to the board and the community. And Karen, if you could go to the next slide.
Carl.
Yes?
We actually have Maureen on the slides tonight.
It's okay.
No, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
No, that's fine because she, she's logged on as Karen, but we have Maureen contributing.
I appreciate you telling me. So my apologies.
No worries.
My apologies, Maureen, for not, you look different now tonight, you know? So anyway, our, our history again went back to last March and, and at that time, I have to say without exception, everybody we interviewed last year as part of our study, there was one common theme we heard throughout all of our interviews, which was, you know, is the fee structure for the three public works enterprise funds, is that fee structure appropriate? And, and we couldn't answer that question, but it certainly came through loud and clear. And, and so that really led to this follow-up portion of the study. And you could jump ahead, Maureen, to two slides, March, and yeah, there you go. So back then, what we had to tell you is there was such limited documentation for both the water, the sewer and the stormwater, that we just couldn't answer your question about whether the, the rates were set appropriately to cover your costs. And what compounded that is your, your existing staff, your town administrator, your public works director and your finance director, for the most part, weren't involved in developing the, that existing methodology that you were using. So although they would have liked to be more helpful, they, you know, truly couldn't give us a lot of information about the background for that, that past methodology that you had been using. So, you know, we don't like to do this as trying to help a, a community, but we had to recommend some follow-up work, really a complete revision of the methodology. And that's what we did. We pretty much, we did start from scratch. And Maureen, if you could go to the next slide. And we started from scratch for a couple of reasons. One is it was very limited documentation of how much time the public works staff, and I'm talking about the laborers in this case, how much time they were spending on your five cost centers. So your cost centers being your three enterprise funds, that's three of your five cost centers, and then your, your highway or, you know, what we call, you know, the general fund and then your transfer station. Those are your five primary cost centers. And there just wasn't data there that was available that we had any confidence in that we could use it for determining how much of your costs were, were staff-related. And at the time, we made three options and we recommended for, for better tracking the time for the staff. And those options are shown on this slide. And the staff implemented immediately the second option, a tracking system where the foreman every day tracks the hours of each of the labors, hour by hour. So if somebody works two hours on water, it gets recorded that two of the hours were on water and the remaining six hours was on, you know, general highway or whatever that split may be. I know there was a plan by the public works director to use option one, a, a new application that you were in the process of bringing on board, which, you know, would have been a true gold standard, as we said in our report, for tracking time. But that's still in the works. And certainly the data that was pulled together using the, the second option, the tracking by the foreman, we found it to be very accurate, very detailed and certainly sufficient for doing the work that we were asked to do. So that was on sort of the direct cost side, our, our challenge there. And then on the next side, Maureen. On the indirect costs, again, we found there was very limited documentation and very little information that your existing staff had in terms of how that analysis had been done in the past. So we recommended a much more robust and hopefully to you, transparent methodology for the indirect costs. And by indirect costs, just so I'll just define it the way I tend to use it, these are costs that are almost in all cases are found in the general fund, so they're budgeted for in your general fund, part of your operating budget. But they're really costs or expenses that are related to, in this case, your three enterprise funds. So as you've done in the past, each year you have town meeting vote an amount of money that where the enterprise funds reimburse the general fund for these indirect costs. And there's a sample of those costs, those categories on this slide, but we wanted to undertake sort of a full analysis of all of those indirect costs. And with some just very limited exceptions, we were able to come up with a full, a new analysis for indirect costs. We have a couple of small holes still to fill in that, that analysis, but nothing of any significance. So by way of background and sort of how we got to where we are today, though, let me tell you where we are today, sort of what's the results of our analysis. And Maureen, if you could go to slide nine. So this is the summary of all the costs. And I'm actually going to do, because I know there's a lot of data on this page, I'm going to do a couple of things. I'm going to work from the bottom up and I'll refer to row numbers to make it just easier to point out some of the high points of our analysis. So I'm going to start at the bottom again, row 30, and which is labeled percent over. And what we found is that all of your enterprise funds, all three of them, are in fact setting rates and charging amounts that are greater than what we found for both direct costs and indirect costs. Water is certainly the closest, you're within, you know, under 6%. But your sewer enterprise fund looks like it's a little bit better than 11% over and, and your stormwater enterprise fund about 19% over on what you're actually incurring by way of costs. So that's sort of the bottom line. And those percentages in terms of dollars can be found, again, working from the bottom up, row, row 29. So water is not quite $170,000 over, sewer is about $165,000 over, and stormwater about $111,000 over what your, what we found to be your, your actual costs. So unfortunate, I wish I didn't have to sort of deliver that news to you, but I think what many of you had suspected was happening, we, we in fact found that that was borne out by the analysis. And then just to drill down into a little bit more of the detail, to give you a little bit better flavor of, of how we arrived at this. So at the top of this chart, the top part is about, is regarding your direct costs. So this is what town meeting votes for each of the enterprise funds and specifically what they vote for the salary line item for each fund. So when we did this analysis, we assumed that we were doing it for the current fiscal year, so fiscal '21. So it's sort of, you were, you could roll back the clock and sort of redo fiscal '21. These are what the numbers would look like. That's sort of what, what we tried to accomplish is using real data from, from this year. So at town meeting, and I'll use water to start in my example, in, in row three, town meeting voted for water department salaries excluding overtime, $336,000. And what we found with 10 months of data and looking at the percent of, of the employees' time that is devoted to water, so although we had 10 months of data, we normalized for a full year, that it looks like based on actual work hours that within the water department, the staff is only going to spend about $225,000 on water-related activities. So a difference of about $111,000. And I won't go over the sewer enterprise and stormwater, but you can see the, the similar numbers in each of those cases where the number of hours that have been borne out looking at data, and we looked at data from the beginning of February, so February 1st, 2020, through January 30th of 2021. So we have, we had 12 months of data. We did not use three months, which were your COVID months, when staff in the DPW was not sort of working a regular schedule. They were sort of in one week and out the next week. So we didn't feel that data was valid, but, but the other nine months of the year, we think is very good data that not only did the department keep, but continues to keep. So going forward, you'll still have good, accurate data for how the work hours and the work activities are being spread among your five cost centers. So that's sort of the first big takeaway on, on salaries. And then on the bottom half of the page are all the indirect costs. And you can see each category of indirect costs that we identified. Each of the categories uses a slightly different methodology. This spreadsheet, which you have in front of you, is, is backed up by a number of different tables. So there's all the detail that you'll need going forward, but it's, each of those categories of indirect costs are backed up by one or more tables that shows the analysis, how we came up with the analysis. And, and hopefully, as, as you or your enterprise fund advisory committee looks at the detail of our tables, hopefully you'll find that, yes, it's a valid methodology, but, you know, this is as much of an art as it is in the science, as it is a science. So having another set of eyes look at this, you know, your enterprise fund advisory committee to look at what we've done would be certainly helpful on, on their schedule for their meeting later this week to present, do a similar presentation to them. But just going to sort of the summary of these indirect costs, and I'll go talking about rows 24 and 25. So starting with water, you had assumed and went to town meeting last year with $266,000 was the estimate or the analysis of indirect costs for water. And in fact, you came within spitting distance of that number. Our analysis shows that your indirect costs were $261,000. That number will increase a little bit when we fill in one of the last holes we have to finish up on auto insurance, so that number will grow slightly. But you're certainly, your indirect costs for water are very close to the number you went in the town meeting with. And in sewer, you went to town meeting with $194,000 change and, and we've come up with, our budgeted number is $213,000. So in this case, sort of a, a higher number we've identified as indirect cost. And, and same as, I'm sorry, I'm, I've got, I've just reversed my numbers, let me start over again. For water, what town meeting had budgeted, the budgeted indirect cost for water was $261,000. And what we calculated was $266,000. So you actually short-changed the general fund in that case. But in, in sewer and stormwater, it was the other way around. So in sewer, you had gone to town meeting with $213,000 and change for indirect costs, but our analysis is it's going to be closer to $194,000. And something similar in stormwater, that your number at town meeting was $139,000 and we came up with $111,000, almost $112,000. There are just two pieces of this study that, again, have not been completely finalized. One is row 17, auto insurance. We've asked the staff in your insurer to really review the data that we had on auto insurance because we were not able to completely match up your DPW vehicles that are on your vehicle list with what's on your insurance list. So you can see there's very small numbers and right currently under auto insurance. And that's because we were only able to match up four, I think, or five vehicles, not the rest of them. So those numbers will increase a bit. And then the last piece of analysis is your employees, DPW employees, as part of their collective bargaining contract, receive payments for a number of licenses they hold. Some of the licenses are sort of general licenses that apply to all their work and some are very specific related licenses, you know, very specific to water or very specific to sewer related. And those specific licenses are not currently built in to this analysis, not fully. And those specific licenses are not currently built in to this analysis, not fully built in. That requires another piece of work. It's not an extensive piece of work. We've set up the methodology for doing that work and it'll probably take, you know, a few hours of work by the staff to get that last piece of data to make sure that the licenses that are strictly related to water are in the water budget, strictly related to sewer the same way. There's one license that's split between both stormwater and general fund. And again, we've set up a methodology for that, but that would just require a little bit more work. It will, overall, it will change the bottom line. It'll make it a little sort of better, so to speak, get you a little closer in terms of what your budgeted and what your actual numbers are. But that's still some work that has to be done. So unfortunately, I've had to do all the talking so far and I hope I haven't gone too quickly, but should the board like and you have any, anything you want to specifically ask about or questions, I'm happy to try to entertain those at this time.
Sure, thank you. Certainly appreciate this work and it certainly is an important step for us to take. I'm just going to ask two questions and then I'll ask my colleagues what they would like to learn from your, your work. In terms of the, the allocation of time, which is really driving the first, what, 10 or 11 or 12 boxes up there? That's actual time performed by the employees based upon, you know, hard record kept by the foreman. So I know it's accurate. But how do we, how do you, in your experience, I'll call it normalize for variations year to year? In other words, if we, for some reason, had a specific year where, let's just say we had a lot of problems with water mains and we ended up spending much more time in year one than we did in year, well, year two than we did in year one, how would that sort of be filtered into this methodology, do you think?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a really good question, particularly for smaller communities like Milis where your staff, for the most part, they're not exclusively doing, you know, work in one cost center or another. They're, they wear a number of hats and they sort of juggle their time. So one option that we talked about in our original report is as you do this analysis each year, so you know, going back to your, you know, your example that, you know, it was a particularly bad year in water and you ended up, you know, spending a lot more on water than you would typically. You don't want that to sort of create abnormal spikes in your rate for one year.
No.
So what we suggested in our original report is as you do this analysis each year, and that's what our recommendation would be, that it would be done each year, but that eventually you work to a three-year rolling average. So you smooth out any peaks or troughs in things like your work schedule, you know, which is probably the one area that may vary the most is the work hours. And, and build your, your rate structure around a, you know, a three-year average. Now, obviously, you won't be able to do that right away, but certainly, you know, as you do this next year, you'll have another year of, of hours, hours work data, you know, workload data, and you can build it off a two-year average, your rates. And then eventually, again, our thought would be a three-year rolling average to normalize those changes in work tasks.
Okay. That's certainly helpful in terms of trying to think through the, the right way to look at rate setting, because rate setting is trying to hit a target over time, not simply one year over another year.
Mm-hmm, certainly.
And the other question I had before I certainly open the floor to my colleagues is in the characterization of the task. So what's important here is not only what time is written down, but what bucket it's put into. So how do we go about defining what is in fact a stormwater activity, which is really the most, the one that I think we have the least amount of certainty on, to tell you the truth, because it's brand new and there's a lot of things you could call stormwater, maybe not as many variations in what, you know, what is actually the water system work. So how do we define the buckets into which the time was recorded?
So I'm, I'll give you a brief answer based on my work in, in my last community, but I think if Jim McKay is here, he's, he can speak more specifically to it. So you're, you know, you're correct, stormwater can be sort of the area that is more gray than others. Having said that, the federal government has helped us out, maybe unbeknownst to them, in that with the, the new requirements under the Stormwater Control Act and the, and the permitting that they do, you know, they very clearly define what the activities are for stormwater management, which is, you know, everything from as simple as, you know, street sweeping is now considered part of stormwater management to things like culvert repair and, and looking at illicit connections into your stormwater system. So in general, you have, we have what's, is identified as stormwater related by your, your permit, the federal government permit. But I think, you know, if Jim wanted to speak to that more specifically, he'd be the, the person who could do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So when we first came up with the analysis breakdown, we actually sat down and caught, hit the nail right in the head. That's exactly how we broke it down through our permit, because everything that's done in stormwater, other than, you know, like even water, sewer, or general work, we, we calculate it and it goes into our yearly report. So everything that's done, it's done by ours. That's how we reduce the, the infamous phosphor, phosphor slogan, is how many times, you know, culverts tested, the culvert's repaired, how many times the street sweeper goes out. So all that work that's, was characterized under stormwater was, David was told, you know, this specifically is, is what needs to be attributed towards stormwater, what has to be attributed to water, sewer in, in general.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Germaine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few questions, but I need some time to digest this. I was looking at it the other day. I'm not clear in my mind how you deal with, first of all, if you have labor, I don't know if DPW hires individuals with specific skill sets. And as a result, we have those individuals on staff and do we, in, obviously, there are times when individuals with specific skill sets are not necessarily going to be used for the skills for which they were hired. So I assume, and this may be an invalid assumption, that there are going to be periods where an individual who has a particular certification, for which he or she was hired, has essentially downtime in terms of the specific activity for which they were hired for that skill set and therefore can be used in other situations. Have you made any analysis with respect to that? And what, what percentage of the time that individuals with specific skill sets are used for that specific skill set?
So the short answer is yes. The work that was done by Dave, your foreman, and then Deirdre in the office is done by person. So although, and I'll, I'll give you some real life data. So on average, 22% of your work, all the work hours for, in DPW, 22% were done on, were water-related work hours. But if you then look person by person, there are some individuals who did little or no work on the water system. And some who are, you know, 70% of their time or more is, was done on, in water, is my example. So if I'm, if I'm understanding your question, we can, we have the data to look at it by individual, how much time. And as I looked at the data, and that's that last piece that I created, the spreadsheets needing to sort of summarize all the data, but I haven't actually loaded in the data, but I looked at it all. And then, you know, in all the cases, we could clearly attribute a full year of work, you know, 2,080 hours of work. And of that work, what percentage was in each of your five cost centers? So somebody may have been hired because of their knowledge and their licensing in water, but they're only spending, you know, 30, 40, 50% of the time on the water. But the data shows where they're spending the rest of their time. So although they may be, have expertise and skill set in one particular area, we do have the data that shows where they spent the rest of their time to equal the full, a full year of work, if, if that answers your question.
It does up to a point because here's my concern, and I don't want this to be misinterpreted because this is not what I'm after, but let me give you an example. I hire a person with skill set A. I end up using that person for 20% of his or her time for a skill set. What am I doing with that person the rest of the time? And therefore, did I actually need that person? Now, the reason I say it that way is I fundamentally believe that we do need that person. In other words, Jim isn't going out and hiring people with specific skill sets just for the fun of hiring them. But he may be hiring them because he needs a certain number of people with that skill set. In the event he has to deal with, I don't know, an emergency, I don't know DPW work enough to say specifically, but say it's a skill set that he has to have somebody who knows how to fit a pipe together, I don't know. If he doesn't have that person on staff, then we may have a problem if he needs that type of a person, which he knows over a period of time, he's going to need it. So 20% of the time, 25, 50%, I don't know what the number is, he's going to need that person. That says the remainder of that time, that person may be used elsewhere at his discretion or the town administrator's discretion, but they're not being used for the specific purpose for which they were hired. Is that a fair interpretation?
I think it's, it's sort of halfway there. So when you're in a small department in a small community like yours, you need, you need backup, right? You need to, people need to have flexibility. So, you know, you may only need two people with a, a D2 license, but you need to have a D2 license, right? So if one is on vacation and the other's sick, you need to have somebody else, even though, you know, over the course of the year, you don't have enough to justify that those two people are going to work all their time, you know, working on the distribution system. So you're sort of in an interesting situation where you, because you're a small community, you have to sort of, I'll call it overbuying, but that's not the best analysis, but you need to have enough people who have the skill sets so that you always have some backup available to you for primarily water and sewer, it's less so in the other areas. And actually, you know, the detail, if you look at the detail, I was, I was actually a little bit surprised because I thought, you know, when you have a license, certain licenses in Milis, under your collective bargaining contract, some of those licenses add substantially on to somebody's wages over the course of the year. But there's many of your staff who don't have those licenses, for whatever reasons. Either they've never taken the time to go and, you know, earn those licenses or they just, you know, felt that they didn't want to go in that direction. So, so not everybody has all of the licenses for water or for sewer. It's a subset. And when you look at their, again, how their hours are spread over the course of the year, at least on that sort of rev, just looking at it from the outside, it appears appropriate that the director has enough coverage of people with the right licenses, but, you know, he's doing it every day, I'm not there every day. And he could, you know, speak a little bit more whether he feels he has the right mix of people for water and sewer to not only get the job done, but cover for, for vacancies, turnover, you know, vacation, summer hours, you know. In water, you have to be there seven days a week checking pump stations. So you want to be able to rotate the weekend work. But I think Jim McKay could speak to that more specifically than, than I can.
I'm, to be honest, not going to try to go down that road too far. I trust Jim in terms of understanding the base needs of his department and therefore what he's hiring individuals for with specific licenses. What I'm more concerned with is when you come back with total budgeted versus what actual costs are. If we're using people with specific skill sets, but at a different task, however, that task is because they are available perhaps. And that's what I'm trying to get my hands around. In a small town like this, individuals have to be flexible to be used on multiple tasks. And just because somebody was hired, as you say, with a D2 or a D3 or whatever those are, and we may not need them every day, the reality is Jim will know that he needs to have them available in a certain number, whether it's one, a two or three people, so that he has backup to ensure the integrity of whatever the system is he's working with. But when they're not being used for that, then obviously they could be used for other things that don't necessarily require that level of certification, which means in all probability, not that level of salary, but they still have to get paid. So then you're into, I'm using the person to, I don't know, sweep a driveway, I don't care what it is, mow, mow a lawn. But we know that they really have a specialized skill, but they just don't need it at that instant. And my concern is that we not get caught up in that. I mean, he needs staff to do a variety of things. I'm concerned that we make sure that we aren't saying, oh, because we used an individual to do a different job, therefore the direct cost to that individual should go to that other job. Well, if we need that person for job A, but we just don't have the work at any given time, then to use that person in job B, which doesn't require that skill level, doesn't mean we don't charge appropriately, because the reality is we need that individual and we're going to have to pay that salary just to have that individual on hand. So that's why I'm trying to get a better understanding of what your numbers mean and how they were derived.
Sure. And I think the companion piece of the analysis, which is person by person and what percentage of their time with, is for each of your cost centers. And then compare that to where they're being paid extra for having these special licenses. that to where they're being paid extra for having these special licenses. I think one that will at least help you with your question, get answers to your question, but also over time, as you start to have multiple years of data on this, and start to see how you're using people, I think that will help Jim in terms of his, his hiring of, you know, are we, you know, are we spending, you know, too much time where there's a couple of guys who are doing water a hundred percent, and I'm burning them out, and I need more water people, or am I sort of overstuffed with people who have the water stipends? The data, you really have to have some historical data to fully answer your question, which is a reasonable question, but, you know, right now, we don't have that historical data to fully answer it.
I ask the question, which is, I think, an amplification maybe, maybe the question I have is, should, for example, the water enterprise pay for the full annualized cost of whatever level license is required for a water technician? Wherever that person spends their time, the only enterprise that gets value from that license is the water enterprise.
And, and my recommendation would be yes, and that's how, that's how we've set up the analysis is, if it's, if the license is specific to a particular enterprise fund, then a hundred percent of it goes to that enterprise fund. And there's a few licenses you have, which are, I'll call them generic, they're not specific to any one cost center, and in that case, we spread the cost of those licenses in the same ratio as the overall time, you know, altogether. So again, twenty-two percent of all time goes for water, so on these generic licenses, twenty-two percent of the stipend, that generic license got attributed to water. You know, fifty-one percent to highway or the general government, because that's how overall, all the time went, fifty-one percent went to highway. So, so that's how the analysis is set up, is if it's generic license, it gets prorated across all five cost centers. If it's a specific license, a hundred percent goes to that enterprise fund.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jermaine?
No, I, I really don't want to go any deeper at this point, but I think I've got an answer that gives me at least the basis for further discussion, and I really appreciate, Carl. And I will pass on to Jim, it looks good, from what I see here. It doesn't look like we have any, what I would call fat in this budget, so I think he's running a lean machine right now.
Ms. Underhill, do you have any questions you'd like to?
Yes, I think so. So referencing back towards the beginning, when you started speaking about the difference between rows twenty-seven and twenty-eight, which is the total, including the direct costs and indirect costs, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so the things that seem, I don't know, undetermined or not, not specific, from what I'm understanding here, is for the direct cost time, because it's a manual process at the moment, there's no program, per se, to be recording exactly the hours that people are putting in to each enterprise. And then, on the indirect costs, we have the auto insurance, and then I had written down licensing, so, and I think that kind of goes towards what, what he was saying, in that if you have somebody licensed at a certain level, and also, obviously, salary, but they're being used in other places where, you know, that level of knowledge or licensure isn't necessary, then it sounds like there would, that would be a place where there could be a difference. Is that, you had mentioned, I think you had mentioned that we don't have a lot of very specific licenses, or licensed, licensed people, like there's some general licenses that you were, you were mentioning. Would there really be a big gap between work people are doing, and if, if we said, if we had something more specific on time, let's say we were using a, a software program to track the time spent in the direct costs, and let's say we did have the auto insurance in there, do you think we'd be closer, the, the actual and the budgeted would be closer in number? Because to me, the actual and the budgeted, you know, with the difference that you have here at the bottom, it's, it seems like a lot.
So it will be, it will be closer. The auto insurance is, you know, it's probably going to bring the numbers up by another ten grand, so it's not, you know, auto insurance is not a big number, but the licenses, those are, licenses are, this is actually my footnote in row thirty-one, I call them stipends, but they're the same thing, a license or a stipend. So let me just give you an example, I'm looking, you don't see this, but I'm looking at my spreadsheet for one employee, when I was sort of testing my spreadsheet, I wanted to use real data with real license numbers and so forth. So for this particular employee, this employee's base salary, just call it up here. This employee's base salary is about sixty-two thousand dollars, and this is one of your higher-paid employees within the department, but sixty, about sixty-two thousand dollars. But the value of the licenses add another eighteen thousand dollars for, and this employee carries a number of licenses, and this is probably at one end of the continuum, an employee who has a lot of license, where you can see it's sort of real money. And so, you know, my, I just ran out of time to complete this for each employee, the data's there, I mean, I have the data, the town provided it to me, and the spreadsheets are all set up, it just needs to be, the data needs to be put into the spreadsheets and then just finish the analysis. But the stipends are some, you know, pretty significant money within your overall salary budget, so that's going to close the gap more. It's not going to close the gap, you know, by, I don't think it's going to close the gap by a hundred thousand dollars, if, you know, that's what you're getting at, but I wouldn't be surprised if it closed the gap by another fifty thousand dollars, particularly in water and sewer. There's really only one license for stormwater, which is actually shared with highway, so I only attribute a portion of it to stormwater. So it won't close much of the gap on stormwater, but, but for water and sewer, you will see some closing of the gap.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much, Carl, we really appreciate it, we're probably going to ask you to come back at some point, this is not the last time we'll be talking about this, because I think what we are suggesting here is not so much an outcome, but a methodology which produces the outcome. I mean, what the water and sewer commissioners have to do, is, and stormwater commissioners, I suppose, is to really adopt the methodology, which I believe that's what you're telling us, right?
Right, I think, you know, once this gets fully vetted by both the select board and the advisory committees, then to adopt that when you go to your rate setting next year, you know, to use this as the basis of your rate setting. And this, you know, I, I ran into a similar situation in my, in my last community I worked in, that, that the actual wasn't quite right, and we had, in our case, you know, I proposed a three-year plan to sort of do a truing up, because you don't, you want to, you know, sort of overly impact the general fund, so we proposed a plan to sort of phase in, you know, the more accurate rates over a period of time. So, you know, that's something that the select board's going to have to determine once, once everybody's comfortable with the numbers, is, okay, how do we go about the truing up of this, you know, particularly given you're about to enter into town meeting within a few weeks, and I'm sure most of your budgets are pretty much set by now.
Well, we're certainly going to have a discussion about that later tonight, but I think it's important for us, I think, you know, that the job is going to be to determine, you know, the methodology we want to use, and then yet, how, what is, how's the journey going to go to get there? Because, you know, this kind of impact is not insignificant on the overall operation of the community. But I very much appreciate your effort, it's, it's, it's going to be quite comforting, I think, for everybody involved to go from, we can't quite explain the methodology, because we weren't here when it made, when we made it up, to a methodology which actually has documentation and allows us, you know, to analyze the, the process. And I do appreciate not only the journey to get there, the number of years, but the development of a rolling three-year average of time, so that we're sure we can get rid of any anomalies which might have occurred because of a difficult winter, or, you know, flooding, or whatever it might be, so.
Mm-hmm.
More to come on this, so thank you very much, Carl, we appreciate it.
I, I enjoyed every minute of it, so I'm sorry I went over my time this evening, but I think you had good questions, so I appreciate your attention to it as well.
Well, we would like to, we would like to give you the opportunity to continue to enjoy working with us. So I believe you are scheduled for a meeting with the enterprise committee this week, correct?
I, I am, yes.
And I assume you'll be providing them with the same presentation and the same backup, et cetera, right?
That's correct.
Very good, okay, and we'll look forward to work with them as well, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, good evening.
Good evening.
You did a nice job, thank you.
Can I just?
Thank you.
We do have, the worker out of system is up and running as of March first, so we are tracking hourly costs, vehicle rates, so that, that is, we started that much first, so we, we're live with our work.
Okay, good. Okay, next item on our agenda is further discussion by this board on the possible activity at town meeting or whenever for the sixty-one A property on Village Street. At this point, I think we have had a good deal of dialogue and communication, we as a board face at a minimum responsibility to determine whether or not this potential process of sixty-one A right of first refusal exercise is presented to town meeting for decision or, or not. So at, at this stage of the game, I'd like to offer to the community, anyone who'd like to comment further on the, the potential for acquiring this property for the town, both pro and con. As I say, I think that we're reaching a point here based upon the deadlines for finalizing our town meeting warrant, as to whether we're going to place this question of sixty-one A exercise before the town meeting in the first domain. So I first of all would allow my colleagues to make a comment, and then I would like to hear from anyone out there in the community who would also like to comment further on this issue. Mr. Jermaine, Ms. Underhill?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I, I look forward to hearing what the residents have to say, there have been, there's been a lot of dialogue that's come to me, I will say, I can't speak for the other board members, both pro and con, and I appreciate that. There's a lot of interest, I will say, in, in part, putting up the buildings and selling the property so that we get the tax dollars, which aren't necessarily a one-for-one trade, but we do receive tax receipts. And the other is for maintaining the open space, I think I'm summarizing that reasonably well. And there are a lot of moving arguments in both directions. I'm looking forward, I hope, this evening to hearing more from people who are attending and getting a final, better understanding of what they think we ought to be doing for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Underhill?
I will echo what Pete said, I look forward to hearing any other statements from people tonight on this Zoom. I too have received a lot of emails in contact, both pro and con, so I think this is a great opportunity for people to make some more statements, and then we can make a decision.
Thank you. I will just echo my colleagues' comments, we all have received multiple correspondence, the multiple correspondence is pro and con, but it is widespread and spirited, so clearly there's a lot of interest in the issue among the folks here in the town. So with that, I ask if anyone would like to speak, address the board on what they think the, the, the right road is on this particular issue. Yeah, Mr. Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I was called you Mr. Moderator, old times, but I am speaking in favor of the purchase of the land. I, I sent an email last week, I'll, I'll keep it very brief, but there's very little open space available in the town, not a lot more large sixty-one A parcels. It's not bought with a plan to use it tomorrow, and none of our properties that we've bought for sixty-one A or open space has been purchased with the idea to use it, you know, the next year, it's never been bought with a plan in mind, the plan evolves as the land exists. And, you know, and I'm, I'm just afraid if we don't exercise this, we have so few options on land that we can control development on and its use on, on a private sale, we have no choice, it has to be used for whatever the, the buyer and seller agree on, as long as it's owned accordingly, as long as the zoning's appropriate. But on this, we have the opportunity to put fields on that side of town if we decide to in future data. We have the ability to use it for other municipal uses. I don't think it's the right place for a school or a town building, quite honestly, but there are other municipal uses that would make sense for it. Again, I think it's a great opportunity for the town to acquire, these come up so rarely, I think it's important that we take a long consideration and thought process on it, and I appreciate the way you've been working through it. I would urge, either way, no matter what the board recommends, that it be put on the town meeting warrant, because I do think, as you pointed out, there's a lot of pro and con in the town, and I ultimately believe the ultimate decision does rest with the town meeting, as we all do, we all know that, we don't believe that, that's a fact. So I'd put it out there to town meeting regardless of the recommendation that comes out of the board. But I think the most important thing I've seen from this whole process is, we need to have a better plan for open space use, and I don't know if that's forming a committee under the CPA committee, or CPC committee, not capital planning, but the CPA committee, but putting together an open space plan seems critical to what this town needs. So we do have a development plan in mind for using the space that we have and other lands that we might acquire. So that's basically all I have to say on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Kathy McInnes?
Yes, Kathy.
Thanks. I'd just like to ask the Board of Selectmen aside from this, if you could, just to recommend you do a few things, Mr. Chair, and one of them would be to ask the town administrator to check with the assessor's office to make a list, it was in the open space plan, but, you know, that was twenty years ago, of all the sixty-one A properties, so we can get a gist of what they are, where they are, and if they would be beneficial for the town, and then maybe that could go to the capital planning, and it could be just put on the back burner that, hey, this property's coming up, and you, you wouldn't hit us like a ton of bricks like this one did. And another thing I'd like to strongly recommend, and I'm going, I'm always thinking of what Erin Underhill said, is that, because she's almost a generation with the kids, and the sidewalks are poor here, if you'd put some sort of line item in the DPW, Mr. Chair, for twenty grand or something, that would allow the DPW to, to put in a picnic table and... allow the DPW to, to put in a picnic table at Verderber Farm, or to mow some parking lots so that, or walking fields so that the, the young people can bring their strollers up there and everything. I think it would be, that would be a great incentive, and for, for short money, really, but it would be yearly. And then the last thing I'd like to ask you, Mr. Chair, if you would kindly read into the record, the letter from the Braun's, because many people don't have access to the internet, or they don't know how to go on to the town website. And I think Ms. Braun clarifies a lot of issues that were made at your prior public meetings, that I think the people listening tonight and those that are going to hear this recording in the future should be aware of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes. John, go ahead.
Yes, I'm John Stedman, and I'm speaking not as a member of the Conservation Commission, who voted four to one in favor of this acquisition, with me as the one dissenter. I'd like to refer to the previous speaker. I got from Terry a list of all the tax abatement properties, which I have sorted. There are 636 acres in, according to the records she supplied me, with agricultural exemptions, 400 with forestry, and 108 with open space. There are seven space agricultural parcels that are larger than the Braun property. And I also agree, we need to fund the tremendous spaces we already have that are open spaces for the public and for recreation. I think the plans of the developer for this particular property allow for open space which could tie into the adjacent conservation properties and really leverage that asset, which unfortunately, because when it was purchased, it was purchased for watershed protection, can't really be used for soccer field or anything else, according to my understanding. So I, I, it's hard to pass on this, but I think when you weigh the, the taxes and how this can contribute to open space, and the fact that we have a number of, of properties that could use a little tender loving care, says that we should put our money to investing in what we have, rather than acquiring more that we're not likely to be taken care of.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to speak.
Yes. Yes, please.
The land that we look out on is really right adjacent to this property. I just wanted to point out the beauty and the wildlife. The vast space that really could be there with the 33 acres that the town owns on one side, the 23 acres in the middle, and we have another nine acres on this side that we don't develop. And to put something in the middle of a, a density of 46 units, approximately 12 acres, so four units per acre, would really, I think, cast into the idea that we could have a developer contribute to the open space, the concept of the adjoining property by having such a dense development right there in the middle of all of this. So I know we're not here to discuss the, the plans of the developer, but I think it's important to look at that these plans seem to be pretty, pretty well formulated, and that to have a dense, dense development. If you look at Acorn Place and see how the, you know, the density of that development appears, I, I don't think it would be an encouraging place to drive through that development to a little parking area on the back part of this dense development, and consider that a good place to go take a walk in the surrounding, in the nearby 33 acres. Whereas to keep that open space, you would have enough affinity with it. I think it's, it's rather unique, and I do appreciate all the other discussions about taking care of the other open spaces that we have in the community. I think this whole discussion has been thoughtful and well considered by other parties that have been in discussion. So I appreciate the overall process too. But I guess it's pretty obvious. I'm, I'm strongly in favor of keeping this an open space usage and potentially purchasing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Jermaine?
I have a question about the cost of acquisition of this land. I, I haven't heard, and maybe I missed it, haven't heard what it would cost the average taxpayer. I think that's an important part of the equation. I'm personally in favor of it. I feel like if we don't use it for conservation land, it's probably quite saleable at some point if we are not using it as part of open space. But I can't imagine passing up a parcel that size for a million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. In terms of costs, that's part of the equation, certainly. Once we have, if we decide we're going to move forward, then the Select Board will have to come forward with a financing arrangement, which we would do, which would include the total cost, would include the interest cost, would include the breakdown of allocation of cost per homeowner, do, or the average homeowner. And certainly, the Select Board has not discussed, nor do I anticipate discussing, any kind of a debt exclusion override for this. That the board is considering, whether we have the ability to finance this through the existing budget limitations that we have, as opposed to adding additional tax burden on the taxpayer. Other comments?
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, Kathy again. I'm sorry. I just, I'd, I'd just like to request again, if the clerk would read the email that was put into the public record by Mrs. Braun.
Yeah, we heard your request. Thank you. I heard your request, and I will refer to the letter when I allow other people to speak.
Okay, thanks a lot, Mr. Chair.
Anyone, anyone else?
Just, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, just if it's not going to be done through debt exclusion, then there really is, and through normal budgeted funds, it's not really a cost per taxpayer, per household, because there would be no increase to the tax rate if that's being done, if I'm correct. It would just be reallocation of existing debt or reallocation of other funds, which wouldn't increase the tax rate at all at that basis. Am I correct on that?
Well, yes, that is correct, assuming that's the direction we're going. That doesn't actually cost people money. So I guess that, the question is, you know, what information, the board, and I'm one step ahead of myself here, because the board has not voted to propose this. I do think the board is committed, whatever we do, to full disclosure, not only with respect to the property, but what the property acquisition would cost. And part of the public record is also what we have been presented with potential for lost revenue. Because in fact, the proposal for the purchaser of the property is to, you know, build homes on that property, which would generate significant tax revenue for the community. So those kinds of elements, I think we're committed to making sure that folks are, understand what it is, from a financial point of view, that, that is at stake. Thank you. So, so other comments? I would like to, as pointed out, we did receive correspondence from the current owner of the property, and they wanted to make some comments about the past use of the property. There was, there has been reference to the, the farming use, basically, of the property in prior years. They wanted to clarify that the property was not used for poultry processing. It was used for, there were chickens. He was an egg farmer, the former owner, or the father of the current owner. Did have about 2,500 chickens in the winter, 5,000 during the summer months. Every year, the older chickens would be eliminated by selling them to a third party, who would take them to a slaughterhouse. So there was no slaughtering of chickens or processing of chickens on the property. There were, he did, his father did kill about 30 or 40 chickens and use them for personal use and to feed the family. But this is not been utilized as a poultry processing farm. He refers to the stream that runs in the land. It was deemed intermittent during the year 2004, when the current home was built upon the property. And the individual, Mr. Braun, points out, they lived on the farm for 20 years. And then for, during his early lifetime, and came back 17 years later, that the stream currently does dry up almost every summer, and always is dry during the, during droughts. He does refer to the fact that there was some sort of chemical spill on the pedestal adjacent property. But from his point of view, the EPA took care of that problem years ago. And there were many years of testing after the spill was cleaned up. So there's no evidence that that property has any contamination which may have moved to the Braun property. So we did ask that we share this information with, with the community. And I think that was, again, email directly from Mr. and Mrs. Braun, the property owners. Again, anyone who wants to request a full copy of that, it's subject to the Freedom of Information Act, and we're happy to share it with folks. Any other comments from the public or the board members? Okay, well, again, this is not the last time this subject will be discussed. Certainly, if we decide to place this article on the warrant, it will come up not only with respect to conversations among members of this board, but also at the Finance Committee. And there's still opportunity for the public to weigh in and state their views as we move forward. So with that said, I would ask my fellow members of the board here, colleagues on this board, if we are willing at this point in time to take action with respect to placing this particular item on the warrant for consideration, or whether we'd like to defer the decision for one more week. But we will have to make a decision certainly by next week, and to meet the deadlines for the warrant.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, Ms. Underhill?
I move that we place this on the warrant for the spring town meeting.
I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded with the Select Board to confirm the placement of a warrant article for the purchase, for potential purchase of the 61A property 377 Village Street. So I will pull the board for that motion. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
So that motion is carried, and the article will be placed on the warrant for consideration by town meeting. It also will be the responsibility of the Select Board to recommend a funding mechanism, and to demonstrate the cost, which we will consider, not during our budget conversation tonight, but certainly on April 8th. So we want to thank everyone for your participation. And again, there, we are more than happy to receive comments on this. The board has not voted. Technically, I want to make sure everybody understands, the board has not voted to support this item. We voted right now to recommend placing the item on the warrant. The usual process for our board, though, is, within the next couple of meetings, we will take a look at all warrant articles, and we will make a determination whether we support or not each of those warrant articles. So that vote will come as well over the next couple of weeks. So thank you very much for participating in this discussion, not only tonight, but the prior meetings. And we look forward to continued discussion of this important issue over the next month, leading up to the town meeting on May 1st. So the next item on our agenda is a conversation about the Lansing Millis stabilization proposal. That's another warrant article item that we want to consider. As the board is well aware, we looked at the recommendation of the Permanent Building Committee with respect to what I would consider to be an interim investment in stabilizing the structure, to preserve it for whatever future use we decide to make of it. We decided that we would visit with the Community Preservation Committee to talk about potential utilization of community preservation funding for this initial stabilization project. And that was thoroughly discussed at their meeting. They took no action, but did indicate that from the CPC's point of view, at a minimum, the community, the town, would be expected to make some kind of financial contribution to this particular part of the project in order to secure some funding from CPC. They were not, at least, without taking the final vote, they were not inclined to recommend funding the full project. And now, this is just the stabilization component, that full stabilization budget by utilization of community preservation funds. So at this point, you know, it's going to be up to this board to determine whether or not we have any options here with respect to partial funding, whether we want to recommend keeping this item on the warrant, whether we decide that we will continue to work with the CPC to find ways to obtain some funding for the project. But at this stage of the game, we have a little bit of a decision to make, not necessarily tonight, but we do have to decide, A, whether to continue to put this on the warrant, and B, whether we're prepared to work to find some potential funding for this project to supplement what might be of interest, might be something the CPC be willing to participate in. So with that, setting up the, the conversation, I, I see that Mr. Jermaine is not muted, therefore. I will recognize that he has something he would like to add.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not muted, unfortunately for you. I have to be frank. I've visited the building now on a couple of occasions. I walked through it, had the opportunity this weekend to walk through the building. And I'm going to give my personal views, and that is, I like the building. I think it's a beautiful building and could be made attractive. The flip side is, it's going to be expensive to do that. And as of this moment, I don't think there's any understanding of what we would use the building for as a town. Now, having said that, regardless of whether we agree that $363,000 is necessary for stabilization, or whether it could be done for less, I don't know. But if we don't do something to stabilize the building at this stage, within a fairly short period of time, it will begin to deteriorate to the point where the cost will probably be prohibitive, regardless of what we may choose to do. And at that stage, we either sell off what's left, or plow it under, or whatever. So I'm looking at those options. And from my perspective, as I say, I like the building. I think it's beautiful. I think from that perspective, it adds to the community. It has a historical nature to our community. And I think that's the kind of thing that we have to think about preserving. There are many arguments in the other direction, but from my perspective, I think it's important to have the opportunity, particularly for the town, to decide whether they think it's worth keeping. So from what I'm saying here is, yes, I would like to preserve it, but I believe this is something that the town has to weigh in on also, and that they need to make a decision. Is this something that they want to preserve? And if so, do we just stabilize it for a time, or do we decide it's not worth it? At any rate, that's my view. And I just thought I'd express it.
You're muted.
Jim, you're muted.
Does anyone want to say that again, so that I can unmute? Ms. Underhill?
Thank you. I have also had a chance to look at the building from the outside. I haven't physically gone into it. But the building, to me, is beautiful. I, I think there could be so many potential uses for it, but I think really the historical nature of the building for the town is important. And I'd love to see the building preserved. One of the things discussed during the CPC meeting was potential grants. One of the things discussed during the CPC meeting was potential grants that might be able to be secured to get some money towards funding some of this project for stabilization. I would be interested in trying to look into that, as well as seeing if there are other other ways that we could provide some funding and seeing what the CPC would be willing to supplement. I it does, looking at the condition of the building, it definitely needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. So waiting for the fall town meeting would put us kind of way farther behind than we need to be in that any work wouldn't probably start until the following year anyway. With with the with the repairs that are needed and, you know, securing the building from raccoons and such, I think we need to act on it sooner rather than later. So I would be I would be in favor of keeping it on the Springtown warrant, but I also know that time is pressing. So I would also like to see what we could potentially do in terms of seeking grant
Okay. Comments from the public, assuming I'm not muted?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, I I think that stabilizing the building is is critical. I currently work for the trustees of reservation. We we've done this with many, many buildings where we just clean the outside, stabilize the outside, and then make it so it's something that can be used and come back to and revisit it ten, five, ten, fifteen years later when funds allow or grants come in. But if you don't stabilize the outside, the exterior, and by stabilize, I mean make it look nice on the exterior, it's not just make it watertight. It'll look beautiful, some nice landscaping around it that possibly volunteers could work on. It could be a nice looking building from the outside, and then the inside is available to be fixed when or if funds become available to do that. And it may be that for this building, even though it is, it does have a lot of potential on the inside, that potential comes at a great cost. I'm not sure what municipal use that would be. But to me, the real value to the town is the exterior at this point, and maintaining that, preserving it, stabilizing it, and beautifying it, I think would all be a good use. So I support putting on the town warrant. Having said that, I have no idea where the money would come from if the CPC is looking for matching grants and such. It's not going to be a quick process, but I think it's the right process to go down that road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes, Ms. Germaine?
Yep. I completely agree with Craig and Aaron and Pete. That's unusual, huh, Pete? I think the building on the outside can be done for the budget that that we've proposed. Maybe a different budget might be appropriate, a little bit less. It's reasonably sound, but there are some potential leaks. We've had animals inside. We weren't greeted by any raccoons last weekend when we took the CPC on a tour, but I still think it's worth stabilizing so that we can decide what to do with it when we have money. I absolutely agree. I would hate to see this building lost to the Town of Millis.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm waiting for Mr. Maltinsky to raise his hand, but maybe he won't. Okay.
I'm here. Is the Select Board planning on attending our next CPC meeting in April?
I am.
Certainly, Ms. Underhill will be there, and to the extent that we think you think it's a good idea for others to attend, we certainly would be able to do that.
Absolutely, I think it'd be good. I'd like to get some feedback. And it was a nice visit on Sunday, even with the rain. It was nice to see the building again. I hadn't been in there for quite a while. And got a we all got a nice perspective of what the conditions are for the building. And I think we we need to discuss those further at our next meeting and and put our heads together and see what we can come up with. But definitely a worthwhile project, speaking on for the Historical Commission. It's a fantastic building. I've had people approach me and say, why aren't you doing something with that building? And I said, well, it's not under the control of the Historical Commission, it's the building of the town. And, you know, nothing was done for years when I was rented out to the Montessori School, and now it's all come to a head. So I think if we put some type of plan in place and make something happen, I think it'd be a worthwhile effort. So looking forward to our next meeting with the CPC and getting a lot of opinions and voices and seeing what we can put together.
Great, thank you. I think that from the Select Board's point of view, we also, and I'll speak for my colleagues, I believe, has heard aloud and clear the obligation on our part to not just pass this off to you folks, but to find a way to collaborate with you in terms of funding and whatnot. So we appreciate that dialogue as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry?
If I may?
Sure, I'm not sure who's.
Bob Weiss.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, Bob. I don't see it in my array here.
I'm on my I'm on my cellphone now. But he is the town planner at this point. And I One is to underscore what I've heard tonight about the beauty of the building. I find it unique. If you we look at the finish on that building, it is unique and something you won't find in very many places in this country. The second point is the way I look at it, we're not just talking about repairing a building, we're talking about a bookend. The other end of the of the street is Niagara Hall, which was beautifully restored. By restoring the depot, we are actually making a better environment for a very thriving business street. I mean, that's the way I look upon it. We're not just working on a building, we're working on an entire street. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Hey, Mr. Chair, if I might, Kathy McInnis?
Yes.
Really, I think everybody can say, we all want to save this. And the bottom line is, does the community think that there's money to do it? Now, is there any way, Mr. Chair, that the Select Board could vote to say, all right, we're going to put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into this, or a hundred thousand, and then put bids out there to see what they can get with, you know, between Dave Vermachi and the DPW people, making a list of what they think needs to be done? In reality, you know, paint it a pretty color or something, but I think you'd get more guesses if it was like a hundred or a hundred and fifty as compared to three hundred and fifty thousand, Mr. Chair. Thanks a lot, and have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Wouldn't have it was that easy, but we appreciate it. And nothing's off the table, I guess, is the bottom line here between now and May first. So, all right, I'm going to just call that this part of the conversation at an end. This will come up again when we look at the warrant. And it's at this point in time, the Lansing Millis building project is on the warrant, so we would have to vote to take it off. And that doesn't mean that we're going to end up actually finding a way to support it once once it goes to town meeting. But at this stage of the game, we had a good conversation about the feedback from the CPC, some input from the community, and at this stage of the game, you know, it's in our warrant, I'm going to move to the next the next item on our agenda, which is the town meeting warrant itself. Now, we can vote to take this off of there when we go through this or not, but at this stage of the game, I think the right place to have the conversation is with respect to the warrant itself. So, Mr. Gzinski, if you could, again, give us the update on the status of the warrant? So that we can get our arms around this and try to finalize at least the elements of the warrant itself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the warrant is pretty far along. We do have about four or five articles. We're still refining. I expect within the next day or two, the language of all the articles, at least all the articles that are remaining after tonight, we will finalize and send to Town Council this week. And the warrant will be in a form for your meeting next Monday to approve, if you so choose, or it could go as late as April twelfth. That would be the absolute deadline for the board to approve the warrant.
Let's assume for the sake of argument that the board is the goal of the board is to finalize the warrant on April fifth.
Yes. So you will have everything you need to do so by by that time. And really, the articles of of note, you've taken up some of them already this evening. Most of the articles are are pretty well set. As I mentioned, there's a few articles that need some language work, which will be wrapped up in the next couple of days. I will, unless you'd want me to go through every single article again, I will just touch upon the items I think that still need some discussion from the board, from my.
Yes, just do that. Give us the ones that we need to discuss.
All right, so the first one would be Article eleven, which you've just discussed. Obviously, Article three is important, but we'll touch upon that, that's your next agenda item. Article eleven is the Lansing Millis Memorial Stabilization Account, so that that is the item we just discussed. That does look at a potentially a three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar cost, of which we do not have any funding in the budget currently. If the board would like to make some changes to the to the budget items or other articles as presented, or address that from stabilization or some other standpoint, we could, but as it currently stands, there are no municipal funding sources at this point for that item.
Okay, let me just quickly, from the board's point of view, I think what we said on our earlier discussion, that for this purpose, we're going to leave this Article eleven on the warrant. If we working if working with the CPC and others, we find that the funding is just not there, we just have to make a motion to dismiss it at town meeting. But at least we would have the subject put in front of the town so folks are aware of, you know, what's at stake here. Now, we may also decide that what we want to do is come up with some other number that we can afford, but at this stage of the game, I think the sense of the board is we'll leave this Article eleven as is, because we still have the flexibility as to whether or not to actually recommend adoption.
Right. The next item, Mr. Chair, I would just like to just touch upon is Article fifteen capital items. We should have a a final article prepared for the board's review within the next day or two. I know the Capitol Committee is meeting tomorrow evening. Because of the the tight situation with our free cash for this year, really, the only items that would be within this article would be the must fund items, the leases, and some items that are related to the Water Enterprise Fund, which would be funded through the water reserves and not through free cash. So I'll have those available for the board within the next day or so.
But I just ask for, you know, for a second, what about the stormwater proposal, the culvert?
Yes, that that is a that is a different that is under Article nineteen.
Okay, fine.
So that is because that would be a borrowing, that that has that is a separate article.
Yep, okay.
So moving on, Articles sixteen and seventeen are both items which would be funded under the general fund appropriation as contemplated for Articles sixteen and seventeen. That's the tree pruning and removal and road maintenance and repair. I would just want to get, you know, by next week, clarification from the board if you'd like those to remain articles, or if you'd like those to be placed within the DPW budget. So that's just an issue that we would need to solidify by next Monday. The next article, just wanted to touch upon, which the board had has acted on this evening, which is Article twenty. The board has voted to place that, you know, to to have that on the warrant, so that's that has been that has been settled there. And just for information purposes for the board, and the Finance Director can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the total cost for that in FY twenty-two would really just be around ten thousand dollars in borrowing costs. So that would be the cost of the town in FY twenty-two if the if the town meeting went ahead and approved that that article.
And then the cost would jump to seventy or eighty thousand a year for the next twenty or twenty-five years. I mean, that's.
That's correct.
Right.
To pay off to pay off that. So that would be something that we could we could certainly present some updated cost of that to the board, but that would essentially be it. The last item that I want to talk to the board or ask the board about this evening would be Acorn Street. There's a, again, we had a request for a sale of land, and again, I think the board can make a determination on that for next at next meeting on the fifth. But I think there was just some the board hadn't formally decided to have that on or have that on the warrant. So again, we'll have some additional information on that in the next couple of days. The property value of that one of that piece of property by the assessors, I believe, is under six thousand dollars, so it's a small piece of property relatively, and since it's landlocked, it doesn't have a high value.
Well, it certainly doesn't have any value to the town right now. I mean, it's just a.
Correct.
Piece of landlocked property. Okay.
Right. So that is all the items that I really wanted to touch upon tonight, unless the board had specific questions or concerns about any other articles. Like I said, within the next day or two, you'll have a complete warrant based on any decisions you make tonight, and then it will be updated on the fifth based on any decisions you make that evening.
Okay. From my point of view, I think that what we have is what we should go with. I'd leave Acorn Street on there simply because, you know, it's all it does is authorize a sale, doesn't really sell the property, right?
Right.
It's a cost item, it's, you know, we're going to gain revenue from it, not a lot, but and it may well be that depending on the auction, that there is no interest, who knows?
Correct.
Okay, any other comments from my colleagues on that, or any of the items in the warrant?
Maybe we could sell twenty-six for three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Okay, thank you.
Three hundred and sixty-three is all we need.
I want to make a little profit.
Okay. There you go. All right.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, on the warrant for tonight.
I think we're in pretty good shape then. Okay. The last item here is going to be the conversation about the budget. Now, I made some resolutions to myself that we're not going to go to eleven-thirty tonight. So I think what we're going to do is begin the conversation on the budget, to the extent that we can spend a half an hour or so on that, that's fine, and then we'll conclude that conversation on the fifth, when we're going to have as slender an agenda as we can manage, although every time we turn around, something else comes up. We'll see. So, Mr. Gzinski, is are you in Carroll, or how would you like to proceed in terms of setting the table for this conversation?
I will, Mr. Chairman, if with your indulgence, I will just give a brief overview and talk about the documents you've received that are related to the budget. And then I know the Finance Director is on the Zoom meeting, so if I she she may add some items as I go along or be available to answer questions that the board may have.
Okay.
So, thank you, Chairman. So in your packet, we do have my recommended fiscal year twenty-two annual town budget. The Finance Director, I've worked closely with her, she's been a great assistance in going through this and putting together the. and putting together the documents. So the proposal that's before you, I believe, does meet to the extent that funding is available, the ongoing needs of the community, and is in line with the budgetary priorities recently established by the board. The revenue estimates that are in your packet are based upon reasonable assumptions, utilizing a three- to five-year revenue history of such items as new growth, local receipts, and also relies on the governor's locally proposals. I did base the recommendation on overall budgetary increase of 4%, both for the school department as well as other municipal departments, exclusionary of the non-discretionary items and benefits such as health insurance, pension, debt, which are not discretionary items. We also, in the recommendation, have certain above-level services that are recommended for consideration to address the needs of the community, again, taking into account the budgetary priorities of the board, as well as our current revenue limitations. Also, to assist you in reviewing this in your packet is a document called FY 2022 Budget Requests Above-Level Service, which outlines a number of the different budgetary items that are recommended for funding this year. And I'm going to limit that discussion mostly to the items in the middle of that document, which outline items recommended to be funded by General Fund Revenue. And these are items that are above-level service currently. And again, these are based on the discussions that the board has had over the past several months, and just talking about these one at a time. The first is the Capital Planning Committee. The committee has requested for some administrative assistance. They've worked without that since their inception, and their work has been outstanding, but they do need some additional assistance. So we have $3,000 in there for that. But that actually is within the 4% cap, so that's not outside the cap that was established. But it is an additional above-level service. The next item is under the Council on Aging for additional operational hours, which was requested by the Council on Aging, and that is a total cost of $48,672.38. And again, that's under the board's priority of having additional hours in that department. The next item is under the DPW. That's for a heavy equipment operator labor. And again, that was listed as a priority of the board, and that is a total of $51,851.60 to follow also with the recommendations of the study that was done last year, as far as the manpower in the department. The next item is in the Executive Office, Select Board Town Administrator, for the Department Assistant Two, to increase the hours there from 18 to 35 hours per week, at a cost of $21,339.76. The next item is under the Recreation Department, to fund the Department Assistant 10 hours a week through the General Fund. It's currently through the Recreation Revolving Fund, and that would move that cost center to the General Fund for $11,920. The next item is under the Town Clerk, Dog Licensing Software for $4,000. That would be within the 4% cap. The next item is Veteran Services. I know you've met with a Veteran Service Officer recently, and that would increase the hours of the Veteran Service Officer and increase the funding for that position by $6,525.12. And the last item is an item that was already approved in the fall, but this is the first time it'd be in the annual appropriation for IT Administration, for an IT specialist at 35 hours a week at $80,000. But that would only, the town of Millis would only be responsible for 57% of that. So those are the items that are within the General Fund Budget Recommendation for the board's review and discussion. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about that particular part of the budget. And Carol, I don't know if I missed anything in that you wanted to fill in?
No, the only point that I wanted to make is that in the listing of the operating budget, we have incorporated the above-service level requests in there. So you will see when you go through that with the Town Administrator, the items highlighted in blue do include these above-level service requests.
All right. So that is the, that is the quick summary of the above-level service requests. The rest of the items within the budget are basically meeting the request to maintain level service operations. And so I will say that the budget before you is balanced, but does use all of our recurring revenues, which are currently available. Therefore, if we were to, or if the board was to increase any budget items, anywhere else or add budget items, we would have to either reduce some of the budgets currently proposed or use stabilization funds. So those would be the options if we were to add additional costs anywhere. So again, that is the breakdown. I do want to touch upon quickly just the Marijuana Impact Funds Request Form that was also in your packet. And you'll see at the Springtown Meeting, there's only two items that we have funding available for, and that is the School Resource Officer Salary and the Marijuana Stipend. But we do anticipate that there should be funding for the remainder of the items by the Fall Town Meeting. So assuming the expectations of the HCA funding come in as we anticipate, we should be able to fund the remainder of those requests at the Fall Town Meeting. So that's the quick, down-and-dirty summary. Again, Carol, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. And as I touched upon earlier, the two articles within the warrant having to do with the tree pruning and removal and the road maintenance, those would also be General Fund payments.
Can I just clarify, for sake of my understanding, the, on the Marijuana, the HCA funds, the School Resource Officer and the Marijuana Stipend were funded by Marijuana HCA payments last year, right? Or the current year?
That's correct. They were funded by Marijuana last year.
So, okay, so this is not an increase. It's just the second year of the utilization of Marijuana funds for School Resource Officer and the stipend that we have contracted with the Police Union to provide. But the Marijuana training, for example, for police would be an additional item.
That's correct.
And even though our expectation may well be, given the cycle, that $300,000 or more might be available from HCA for appropriation in the fall, it's not, it's not available now. That's correct. Okay. Okay. Any questions from the board? Would you like to get into the conversation at these high levels? Or launch into the details? Or how would you like to proceed?
Chairman McCaffrey?
Yes.
I do think I have a question. I don't know if it's helpful right now, so I'm happy to ask it. And if it's something that we would discuss later at another time, that's fine. It's really in regards to the Marijuana Impact Funds. Just to wrap my brain around it, these are funds that we would expect to receive every year? Or just are some of these because of host community agreements that are temporary?
These are five-year only. There's a five-year horizon on these.
Okay, so if we're funding.
Let me, let me just qualify it a little bit. Since no one has, no one yet in the Commonwealth has gotten to year six, we don't have any precedent as to what kind of negotiation might occur between the Marijuana business and the community that hosts it. So what we have is a five-year HCA. We actually have three of them now, four of them. But the law only allows a five-year period for that.
So I guess my question is, when using these funds, since they, I'm going to call it temporary being five years, does it make sense to fund something like a School Resource Officer Salary out of this when it's only a five-year, like, fund? Wouldn't it make more sense to have that, like, in a budget? I don't know if I'm asking a crazy question.
The answer is no. Your answer is yes. If we had the $90,000, we'd put it in the budget. The question is well-placed. I think that this was just, this is certainly a temporary situation, which can't, which may not be able to be sustained. Although, given the fact that we have other Marijuana businesses, you know, that have not yet begun to do business, we might find that the flow of cash goes beyond the five years. But this, the analogy here is going to be the Safer Grant, where we've got, you know, firefighters that we've added under a federal grant that's fully funded for a four-year period, and then the fifth year, we have to decide how to proceed, so.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Germaine.
Assuming this underhill is done, I don't mean to preclude or.
No, I think I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Are we going to discuss this budget in any detail tonight, or would you prefer to wait until the 5th?
I'm happy to begin the dialogue right now if you'd like, because anything we punt on, we just have to spend more time on. But if the board would prefer another week to study it and then come back, that's fine with me too. I mean, it's not quite 10 o'clock yet, Pete. I mean.
I understand. I'm looking at that myself and thinking it'll be an all-time record, but.
Yep.
Because I do have a number of questions that I'd like to ask, if that's all right. And then you can cut me off at any point if we want to proceed to another night.
Sure.
I want to start with the Fiscal '22 Budget Requests Above-Level. And I just need some clarification, if I may. In the fire on the ambulance for $60,000, are they funding that out of ambulance funds, or is that coming out of the General Fund?
That would come out of the General Fund in the fall. The Fire Chief has asked for the town to fund one more ambulance, and then after that, they should be able to fund it through the revolving fund.
So in essence, this is a one-time, anticipated to be a one-time expenditure that we have to come up with. Is that correct?
Well, it's more than $60,000. That's just the first year. So the total ambulance replacement is $350,000. There's a, I believe, a 200-day lead time in order to get an ambulance. So that's why the chief was hoping to get it on for the Springtown Meeting. But there's no funding at this point.
No, I understand. No, what I'm saying is, we expect after the $60,000 that the ambulance fund will be able to cover it from that point on. Is that correct?
No, they're actually wanting, expecting it to be borrowed money for, I don't know, five years, and then they would pay for that full ambulance of the $350,000. And then in five years, they would buy an additional replacement ambulance, and then the revolving fund would be able to handle it at that time.
Ah. So this, we're covering it for that five-year period?
Exactly.
Okay. That's something I wanted to get clarified. Okay. Now, to get to a couple of things that are of concern to me. And I don't know what the answers are, but I'm going to propose something. Here's my concern. We keep talking in this town about roads, roads, roads. Yet this year, I see once again, we're putting $50,000 into our roads. And why? Because we've got a lot of other expenditures. And the question in my mind is, what are our priorities? I don't deny that a number of these are very important. By the same token, we keep denying the community the opportunity on roads. So we either have to cut back on some of these things that we think are very important overall for the community, or the community has to recognize the road maintenance is never going to be what it wants in terms of what this community needs. I don't mean to make a speech about it, but I hear everywhere I go, everyone's upset about the roads. And I can't say I blame them, because my car's going to need alignment after I hit a couple of those potholes today, because I wasn't paying close enough attention on how to dodge them. My concern is, when I look at some of these, what are the trade-offs? And I'll tell you where I'm coming out. Obviously, it has to do with personnel. And so the only way you can recover the monies on a recurring basis is to recover them from areas where the costs are going to be on a recurring basis, unless you intend to float some kind of debt exclusion or something else. I'm not saying that's the way we want to go, just saying there are only a limited number of alternatives. And when I look at this, much as I hate to say it, the alternatives get into such areas as additional hours, whether they're from library or Council on Aging. Yes, we all want the Council on Aging to have more capability, but that's $48,000 that we can't use for something else, for a heavy equipment operator. I fully recognize that DPW needs these things. I'm not certain on the Human Resources. I'm going to ask Mr. Gazinski. Beside it, it says deferred, but it looks like it's added in to the 548. Is that in there, or is it not in?
It is, it is not. The items they deferred are not included in this year's budget.
They are not included in this.
They are not included.
Okay, so neither the Town Clerk stipend nor the Human Resources Administrator are in this year's budget.
That's correct.
Okay. So then I also come to the tree removal and trimming. And I thought we had, as a group, agreed that they needed $60,000 for this coming year. Am I mistaken in that?
I believe, and I could be mistaken, I believe the Tree Board asked for $40,000. I will say that the DPW Director in his budget does have a line on him for $15,000 for tree trimming. So the total that the town would have for next year is $55,000 for tree trimming.
Well, maybe that's the number I'm thinking of. I thought it was about $60,000, but, okay, so he has that. I guess my point is, and I don't know what the answer is easily to deal with this, but we can't continue to have the town getting upset about roads, and yet we come up with, besides Chapter 90 funds, an additional $50,000 a year. We're never going to catch up at that rate. It just isn't possible. To be very frank, we ought to be putting at least $200,000 additional a year into the roads. I'm not saying I know where it comes from. That's not what I'm pretending to say. What I am concerned with is, once again, we've eaten up whatever discretionary budget we've got, and we haven't added above the original $50,000, which we seem to come up with every year. And I am very concerned about that. I think we need to review this budget. I think we need to review this budget and think about ways we come up with another fifty to a hundred thousand dollars somehow for roads. We owe it to ourselves, we owe it to our town to deal with that, and we have to see what the implications are. And I think it's something that has to be explained, not only as we go through the budget process, but perhaps even if town need it. It comes up on a regular basis. I think they have a right to understand what the options are that we're dealing with and what the alternatives are. So I don't know how to express it any other way at this point. I mean, granted, we can take out some things, but those are the trade-offs. We're gonna make them, no question. But we need to have the town understand, here's the bind we're in. Thank you.
Chairman McCaffrey?
Yes.
Can I just follow him on that point, um, with the roads? I think, I think it is important for everyone to be aware of the, I suppose I'd say, tight decision we have to make in that there's only so much money and there's different, um, areas that need attention. Um, you know, I, I fully recognize that the council on aging needs more attention. Um, so do I think this is a worthy request? Absolutely, I'm sure Pete does as well. The roads, however, I agree that throwing very small amounts of money at it isn't going to get us anywhere fast. But I do recall, and I believe this was even before the town decided to take on the debt for the school, that there was a warrant article to fund roads with a debt exclusion, and that was not approved. I think, I, I think sometimes it's a tough decision. I, 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 I'm not sure where, where the priorities would be for the general public when looking at budgets like this. Like, I understand that the roads are gonna take significant money, and I think everybody needs to understand that the roads would take significant money, and that, that has to come from somewhere. So I think it's just, it's a really tough position to be in, and I know people have said that they feel the taxes are, are extremely high as they are. Um, you know, the, the, the question just begs, we, I mean, we need the town to function. And there's, as it is, we don't have a large, well, I don't think we, I personally don't believe we have the adequate staff to function in all areas as it is. And we can't just add people willy-nilly. So I just see, I just see us in a tough position. I see what Pete's saying. I also see that, you know, town meeting needs to make some of these decisions too. And if, and town meeting needs to speak. Um, they have before, and we're still here because we have not done anything with the roads.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
I'd like to also make one other comment, and that has to do with the previous vote on the roads. I will say that what I can recall as one of the arguments that ended up against the roads was that there was no certain way of assuring that the monies that were in fact raised after the first year would in fact go for the roads. And a lot of people got aggravated because if they're going to pay the taxes that they thought were going to the roads, they didn't want any chance of any kind of discretionary use of those funds to be used elsewhere. But the reality was, as I recall, and I may be incorrect, after the first year, those funds could technically be used any way that the town chose to use them. So I think if we proceed with other alternatives for funding, we have to come up with a mechanism that assures the residents that if they vote for it, that that money is in fact going to be used for roads. Thank you.
Well, if I can clarify what happened, because I was on the board at the time, there was a press, there were, the board was presented with the, uh, difficult situation that we're currently in. And in order to make meaningful progress, uh, on road repair, uh, over a five-year period, for example, uh, the guess was that you'd need to spend about six hundred thousand dollars a year. And if you did that for five years and certainly for ten years, you'd be on top of the situation. Three hundred thousand dollars, give or take a nickel, is available from chapter ninety. So the board took the position that this is a permanent problem. We don't need an additional three hundred thousand dollars for a while, we're gonna need it forever. Because once you're finished with your road repair project, then the road you repaired ten years ago is gonna need to be repaired. So the board made the decision to present to the town a three hundred thousand dollar operating override for road maintenance. Um, and the town did not adopt that. Now, whether or not, in retrospect, it was because there was no confidence that the money would be used for roads or that the tax, the taxpayer didn't wanna see any additional taxes or whatever. It's all of the above, you have to assume. Uh, so that was not passed by the town. Had the town been presented with a debt exclusion, that would have been directed to those roads, same amount of money, let's say three million dollars over ten years, with three hundred thousand dollars spent, maybe that would have passed, I, I don't know. Um, but my feeling then, and my feeling now, is that this is not a temporary issue, it's a permanent issue. And until the town comes up with a permanent funding mechanism, it's never gonna get its arms around this problem. So that's the way I look at it, that's the way I looked at it then, that's the way I look at it now. Um, and, you know, there's never a guarantee in this life that every future government will exactly follow the rules that you set today, because that's why we have a future government, and that's why there are leaders to determine how they're gonna apply the funding down the road, uh, down the road. Um, so be that as it may, the dilemma that we faced now almost six years ago is exactly the same dilemma that we face today, except it's six years worse, as we know. Um, so if we're looking to, to create a road maintenance program that is actually going to address the problem, we're gonna have to come up with, in my humble opinion, three hundred thousand dollars in the budget to do it. Now, if you designate the three hundred thousand dollars in the budget today as an operating expense, there's no guarantee next year that the next board might decide, not decide to cut that or increase it. I mean, the operating budget is subject to annual review by the political leadership in place at the time it is adopted, so, I mean, that's the fact. Now, the way the world has worked over the last twenty-five years is next year's budget is always derived from some factor of last year's budget. And we know that, because that's what's been happening over many years. Uh, now, that, of course, is only when the revenue's going up. Um, there have been times when it went down, so cuts have to be made across the board. So, I mean, this is a philosophical conversation, really, about how do you wanna pres- how do you wanna present your, your priorities, knowing full well that if you move money this year to a different priority level, there's nothing that prevents next year's board from changing. You just have to do the best you can with the years, you know, what you have. Unless you create some kind of revolving fund or dedicated reserve fund or something like that, uh, for road maintenance, then you're never gonna be, you're always gonna be subject to future, um, uh, you know, appropriation. Now, that being said, um, the fifty thousand dollars is not, was not in the budget last year. It's in addition to the budget. We had zero last year for town appropriation toward roads. Is fifty thousand dollars a step? I think it's a step. Uh, is it enough? Certainly not. Um, is it the beginning of a process? I don't know, it's up to future boards, really. Um, but frankly, I have a hard time, uh, substituting, you know, not looking at the other needs, and particularly in my situation, from where I look at it, the senior center. Um, I feel very strongly that when COVID is over, we should be in a position to open that senior center full-time for Millis seniors because that's what they're, that's what they deserve. Um, now, if we wanna spend that money on roads, that's up to this board to make the recommendation. I mean, and we will go to the town meeting with our recommendation. Whether they follow it or not is up to them. Um, so, I mean, that's my little speech, if you will.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to clarify that I brought those up as options, not because I like them, but because if you're gonna change the budget, you've got only so much money, and you have to shift it around. Being a senior myself, I certainly want to see the senior center, the council on aging be funded, quite honestly, more appropriately than it has been. But it is, as you noted, and as Ms. Underhill noted, these are the priorities that the town has to begin to make, rather than hearing the constant complaint that we have bad roads and we have this problem. These are the funds we have to deal with. This is it. We can't materialize them from anywhere else. And if we, if you want to have the improvement, we have to come up with a funding mechanism that hopefully subsequent boards will adhere to. But the community has to feel confident that if they are going to agree to put, and I'll just throw a number up here, three hundred thousand a year into, whether it's a debt exclusion or whatever, that that money is gonna be used for what they thought was the allocated purpose, to be allocated as the thought, which is for roads, then they have to be confident that that's going to happen. And we have to help them to understand that that's what we believe also.
Well, I, I, you know, I don't disagree with that. I do take issue with people who say that the select board or school committee does whatever it wants with the money, because I don't think that's true. I think the committees do their best to disclose what's going on. That's why we have a line item budget. That's why we're working toward, you know, more transparency through the open checkbook technology that we're gonna have available so people can actually see where the money's coming from if they really wanna look at it. Um, look, I don't have any, I hear the same issues you have, both my colleagues here, on the condition of Millis Roads. And I drive over the same roads too. And I would love to have three hundred thousand dollars available to spend on road maintenance this year and forever. My view is that I don't have it because the additional funding that I see, I think there are other priorities that come above that. That's my role as the selectman to make that recommendation. If the community wants to support it, then they can. If they would like to change it, then they can do that as well. But our obligation is to go to the town meeting with a recommendation. So if this board wants to reallocate some additional funds toward road maintenance for this budget, we have to tell the town administrator where we want him to cut so that he can create the funds available or increase appropriation for roads, which, by the way, would be an appropriation for fiscal twenty-two and doesn't necessarily commit this community to a similar amount in fiscal twenty-three. I mean, that's the reality of budgeting, so I'm more than happy to have a conversation with my colleagues as to where we would like to go to find this money. And that's fine. Um, this is what, this is what we're doing the next, this meeting and the next meeting, is coming up with our recommendation. We've asked the town administrator to come up with a recommendation based upon our priorities, and if we wanna adjust the priorities, then we'll have Mike and Carol redo the numbers, and we'll come up with, uh, a different allocation. So do we want the town administrator to go back and develop a budget recommendation that increases the line item for road maintenance? And if we do, by how much?
Mr. Chair, if I might, if I'm allowed to, Kathy McGinnis?
At this point, I'm just gonna let the select board have this conversation, and then I'll ask-
All right, Mr. Chair, thanks.
Thank you.
I would like time to review alternatives with the town administrator. I can look at the numbers here. None of it is pleasant if I have to trade numbers in one area for another. I can tell you that, I'm, I'm not suggesting otherwise. But I feel that I want to take a stronger look at this budget and see if there's some way, and I don't know how I'm gonna see it, to add some money to the road maintenance. But I, I can't see it tonight without cutting in some areas that we need to think about whether it makes sense to even consider doing that.
Well, if we wanna have further discussion, then we will defer the, you know, defer this because we, this is the purpose for having a conversation tonight, is to get some sense from the board as to whether or not the priorities that are presented in this budget are ones that do make sense. And if the consensus is further study and dialogue is required before we meet on the fifth, then I'm perfectly willing to have that, you know, that's the will of the board. It's not up to the chair, it's up to the board as to how we'd like to proceed. So if that's, is that what we'd like to do? Have some more time to review it? Have some time to discuss it with the town administrator?
That's fine with me.
I would like that.
I'd be interested to see, um, I mean, granted, this is my first budget on this, on the board, but, um, I, I, I'd be super interested to see what suggestions there could be, uh, because from what I'm looking at, to me, all this is necessary, and I, I just, it's just a tough, tough spot to be in. So, um, you know, I'm certainly fine-
Welcome to the job. That's where they pay you the big bucks.
Oh, yeah.
Well, frankly, I think that from my perspective, you know, it, it's, if, if this board is looking for a higher number in that line, it's, it's easier for the, the staff to say, okay, what you gotta come up with is X. And then they work with us or work with each one of us one by one to come up with X. If you simply say some more, it's not enough guidance. And that's my view, because we can go, you know, this is, this will then become endless iterations uh, of the same issue.
So to make this productive, then, um, does that mean that we should be, at least informally agreeing to some kind of a number that we'd want to see that out before these side discussions happen before the next meeting?
Well, I, I would say we're not gonna reach consensus on that number. I mean, I'll just, from my perspective, fifty thousand dollars is a reasonable number, and it gives us a start. Other members are not comfortable with that. All I would do is ask that if you're going into a conversation, have some goal in mind. Otherwise, it's gonna, it's not gonna be as, because we're only talking about a few days here. It's not like we have months. So if that's okay with you folks, that's okay with me, certainly. Mr. Gazinski? I think you're, uh-
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Don't go home early, okay?
If I might, please, at some point?
Yes, okay, Ms. McGinnis.
I almost forgot what I was gonna say. Um, you know, Ms. Underhill, I understand it's your first budget, and for all intents, it's probably Pete's first budget too, because you sit there, remember Pete, it's like, you don't know what you're really doing. But, um, I just wanna tell you for a minute that my first two years were with Mr. Askinwall, and then also, you might remember Chairman Jim, the, um, Ms. Kennedy, I believe her name was. And then we would-
Ms. Anne Kennedy.
Yeah, there you go. Um, she was all right, you know, I mean, it could've gotten worse. But with, the, the three of us, the, the BOS, we would call her, would, um, tell the town administrator what we wanted. And he and the finance director, a different one at the time, would say, okay, this is what my, my bosses, the board, wants. We gotta try to accommodate them. Let, let your, all of those people that we put in the finance department, let them come back and tell you where to make some cuts. And you might have to include the police, the fire, who knows what. But, you know, let him start with the hard decisions. And I'm gonna stop right now. Thanks a lot, and good luck, you guys. You know, two out of three of ya, you know, you want an increase in roads, so that's a majority. Thank you.
Thank you, my former colleague. All right, so at this point, I think we have some road forward over the next- All right, so at this point, I think we have some road forward over the next, I keep using roads, over the next few days. I would say that, um, just as a bit of a response, the budget that has been presented here is a reflection of the town administrator and the finance director coming to us with a budget recommendation based upon the priorities that we enunciated prior to this. So now we're looking at potentially tweaking it rather than a revolutionary change. So, uh, unless we've changed our priorities completely, um, this is, you know, maybe off target, but it's not in the, we're in the right church, maybe we're in the wrong pew, I don't know. Um, in any event, with that, um, I think we have reached the end of our conversation. We have no minutes to mull over at this stage of the game. I think we've completed the, the agenda. Um, so what I'm going to do is-
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Followed by the name of John was raising his hand to-
I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't see. Is that Mr. Stedman?
It is.
Please.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Listening to this, uh, conversation, one of the things that Mr. Gazinski said, uh, and I have not been in the earlier meetings, was, this budget includes a four percent increase for personnel. Uh, in these times of low inflation, I know it's been tough for several years, I don't know how many funds that would free up if that were three or three and a half percent instead. Just something that you and the finance committee or, uh, chair may, uh, may ponder. Uh, that's all I have to say, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, just to clarify, the, the budget guideline that the finance committee, the school committee, and the select board agreed upon was a four percent increase in the budget from prior year, not an increase in personnel cost. So, uh, that guideline was based upon, uh, projections of available funding. So that, the four percent number is a guideline, there's nothing in that guideline that says that the board might not decide to reduce personnel costs in order to increase other expenditures. So you, just to clarify that.
If I might also add something, we, you don't see all the other costs that are embedded into here before we get to this. We have costs for insurance, healthcare, and other things that have gone up. What I think the healthcare went up by what, seven or eight percent?
No, it went up ten percent. Benefits are up ten percent.
Sorry about that. But the point is, we have to cover those costs before we ever get to this, because those are non-discretionary. So for anyone who's listening, um, the budget gets a little more complicated when you dig into it from this perspective.
But I agree with that, but it's also extremely valuable to us and to the community to hear some new points of view. So I appreciate those who are participating in and sharing with us, because at the end of the day, the folks on the call are going to be the decision makers, because they will be the folks at town meeting who will approve or amend or what have you. So, um, next meeting will be a much more detailed meeting on the, each element of the budget, uh, as proposed by the town administrator, so there'll be more detail. And I, assuming that you have an interest, I urge folks to tune into next week's meeting, where there'll be a lot more detail. Okay, that being said, um, this board does have meeting, uh, work that needs to be done in executive session. So, um, what I'm going to do at this point in time is, again, thank everybody for participating. Um, and I'm going to poll the board to go into executive session to include discussion over the purchase and exchange lease or value of real estate, which is the sixty-one A parcel on Village Street, and also to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with Union Personnel, which is the outstanding contract with the SEIU, uh, union. So for that purpose, I will, uh, make a motion to go into executive session, and I will call the board. Upon conclusion of the executive session, the board will adjourn, will emerge from executive session, and then vote to adjourn the meeting with no further business conducted. So I'll call the board for executive session. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried, and we'll go into executive session. And thanks to everyone who has participated in the public session tonight.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, good night.
All right.